Workshop, Jenny, if you can take the role.
Councilmember Thorson?
Here.
Councilmember Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Mayor Furlong?
Here.
Motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved, Your Honor.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. In regards to the HRA discussion, why we're not convening as an HRA as we have in the past? And we have a separate HRA meeting, there's a separate HRA agenda. Typically, it's at the end of council meeting. I'm just kind of curious as to why we're not doing that in this situation.
We had discussed it, City Manager and myself, because they need an answer sooner than later. I don't know, Scott, if you want to...
Well, I think that, yeah, the comment is this is probably more of a conversation about the, to move ahead with the county's request for the, for the HRA. The information that's in the workshop packet here is basically the same information, or some of the same information that was in the last workshop and discussion. And then some additional items that were added this afternoon at Councilmember Wong's request, which I think would help have some conversation about that with the, with the county resolution. I can just say that I have not heard a lot of necessarily support for the county's request. And so the, the idea was that there was going to be, would be specific conversation in the county's request for the HRA at this meeting. If it did not move forward from here, and there was just a consensus, basically what I would do is send a letter back to the county that we are not interested in participating at this time. If the council after the discussion here this evening wanted to look at potentially supporting this, then it would have to be brought forward to the council meeting tonight to, to take some action on that. But based on, on feedback that I've been getting is, is to have that conversation here at the, at the workshop. Also, I'm doing a full HRA meeting. It is definitely a planned event, and we've been, while working with Century College, they've been updating the plans and scaling the plans for the student house and coming up with a budget, a full budget for that, that they would see through and would be a budget that would then be considered and adopted, so that the majority of that work go all through the college. But moving forward with there is a, is a kind of a commitment in that house for this year to then also talk in depth of what, what does the HRA look like in the future? Is that something that, you know, after this fall, with that commitment, is it, do we want to go a different direction? Is the student build housing still a part of this process? Or is it something that, you know, the HRA is, is doing more of a, I guess it almost look at it as something similar that we did with the anchor block site, where we might be acquiring properties to clean them up and then make them available to, to developers to develop on their own instead of, instead of us being in, doing full construction and things like that. So I think an HRA meeting that would have a pretty lengthy agenda and a lot of discussion of, of potentially revamping the whole program from that program to, to loans, to our own facades and, and different things within the city. So that's kind of how this was, was put together. The county is, is looking for, for an answer. And again, the, the feedback that I've been getting is not, not a lot of support and the question of whether we even need to have a vote on this.
Okay, so I guess my question is more kind of procedural, like typically when we're going to discuss HRA things, we would meet as an HRA, because it is a different body. But it sounds like it's just because there's no, no action items, it sounds like, potentially. So I guess that's okay. But I think in the future, if we're going to have any discussion related to HRA, we should officially meet as an HRA body, just to make sure we're following all the proper policies and procedures.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Thorson, I don't, in your packet, and I don't know who prepared this resolution, I think it was the county, but I don't know that. It does at the very end say, their sample resolution says resolved, "The City Council for the City of North St. Paul authorizes the Ramsey County Housing and Redevelopment Authority." I'm on page 22 of your packet.
Yeah, and again, I, you know, I'm, I'm just saying, I mean, if we're going to meet as an HRA, we should, or have discussions in our HRA, we should officially meet as an HRA. We had a, the last HRA meeting was on Zoom. It was, I believe it was January 21st, and it was just to approve the appraisal of the House on second. And I understand that every member here is also a member of the HRA, but we have, it's a separate budget, it's a separate levy that's approved. When we meet as an HRA, we're recognized as commissioners. It's just, you know, there's a separation here, and that's all. I was just questioning why we're not doing that when we're having this discussion. But my answer's been, my question's been answered, so.
As it relates to that house, not to jump in on this, but as it relates to the house, that is controlled by the HRA, so that should be a HRA discussion. I, I thought the question was, why is the resolution, as it relates to the county HRA, not being done at an HRA level? And I, I think the answer is because it takes a vote from the city council, not the HRA, to join.
Sure. My question is just why we're going to have discussion about HRA-related things and not meet as an HRA. But that's been answered, so thank you.
Okay, so any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, motion carries. So we have the few topics, and one is the review of the North St. Paul Housing Redevelopment Authority and Ramsey County Request to Levy. City Manager Dick?
Again, Mayor and Council, thank you. And a lot of this information, this basic first section was the same information that we had provided previously for, for discussion. And Kyle from our Finance Department, you know, Finance Director, had gone over some of those in detail, and we can do that again. A lot of this is, is supporting information of where, where our HRA is today, the funds associated with it, and what, what it's been used for. And then there's some census data that was included with that from previous. And I just want to draw attention to the information that Councilmember Wong had us add this afternoon. And I think that might be something that, Councilmember Wong, I don't know if we want to specifically, if there's areas that you want to specifically talk about or look at, that we could, that we could bring up, that you'd requested that information to be added. Again, we're trying to provide as much information with this and to really answer the question for the county as if, if this is something that the city, the city council is interested in moving forward with at this time. I will tell you that, in leading up to this, last week on Friday, I had called Ramsey County and actually talked to, and then City of St. Paul, and found out that the City of St. Paul had passed unanimously, had passed this resolution to support this with Ramsey County. How also, however, the big piece that they added to their resolution is that a minimum of 50% of the dollars levied by Ramsey County will be, will go back to the City of St. Paul and be spent on the City of St. Paul projects. A, a minimum of 50% of that, of those dollars. So...
It doesn't matter what year or anything, it's 50% every year?
50% every year. So, you know, the discussion in the past has been that this would generate approximately $12 million. So based off of that resolution and county finalizing their resolutions, and that really brings the pool down to $6 million potentially to the, the suburbs. And St. Paul can apply, along with the other cities, to compete for those dollars. But a minimum of 50% will go back to the City of St. Paul.
Councilmember Wong, do you want to maybe? I don't, we, I don't think we got that information.
It is in your packet.
Oh, it did come late.
Came Friday.
Yeah, so I have the information, let me find it here. Let's see, St. Paul, so I have included in here, it says, "St. Paul Approved Resolution" on your tab in there, that, that is in the packet. And it is on, let me find it here. Number seven, it's on pa, page 19. On the same, on the tab is listed, "St. Paul Approved Resolution" on page 19. So bullet number seven is what they added to their resolution that they, they passed. Again, it talks about at least 50% of any tax levied by Ramsey County. HRA will be spent on projects located in the City of St. Paul. So I did talk to Commissioner Reinhardt about that on Friday, and she was going to look into that and see if there was, be anything that the county could do to help control that for the suburbs. You know, there, is there something that the county can put in that a minimum of 50% of the funds would be allocated to the suburbs? But as it stands right now, that at least 50% would go to St. Paul.
So I guess...
Councilmember Thorson?
How... So Ramsey County has passed on part of their resolution that they're in so long as at least 50% of the county levy is spent within the boundary of St. Paul.
Correct.
Sorry, was that Ramsey County or St.?
St. Paul, St. Paul.
Okay, the City of St. Paul.
City of St. Paul.
City of St. Paul.
Yes.
Okay.
Their resolution saying, "We're in as a part of the Ramsey HRA, what we're being asked to join."
Correct.
So long as 50% of that Ramsey County levy is spent within the City of St. Paul.
Correct.
Just trying to understand how that, like now, so the City of St. Paul is, what approximation are they contributing to the...
It's very close to that 50%, and that's where they listed at least 50%. So they'll, they'll basically get back what they've put into it through, through the sale of St. Paul.
And so if we were to do something similar to that, what would our allocation percentage be? I mean, they, they gave a rough, rough estimate, that'd be about $45 per the median home, but do they, do they have a total dollar amount of what the city...
It was about 2.5% to 3% of our contribution. I think it's in the packet somewhere, I'd have to find it. But I think they said about 2.5% to 3% of North St. Paul residents would be contributing to that 12 million.
And we don't know that dollar amount. But that...
Whatever that...
I think...
What percentage of that total bucket?
Yeah, so that was, so, so if Ramsey County is estimating that this levy will be 12 million, and St. Paul is saying, "Okay, we're in so long as our contribution, which is roughly 6 million, is spent in St. Paul each year."
Correct.
So now that leaves the rest of Ramsey County with potentially 6 million, unless St. Paul's awarded a greater percentage. I mean, that's, that's where my concerns are, is that, you know, we're being asked to contribute to this, but after that, I mean, what say do we have in it? They, they tell us now, "Oh, yes, we're gonna, we're gonna seek your input and ask that," but...
I think that was some of the, in talking to Commissioner Reinhardt now with this happening, is there some type of check and balance that can be put in place that, again, that it would leave at least 50% to the remaining suburbs? So that St. Paul is not an at least, that they're at 50%? And then the remaining 50% could be allocated to the suburbs that are competing for projects?
So we don't know what our total dollar amount would be, you know? St. Paul's, they're saying 6 million would be their annual contribution, but we don't know what our total dollar amount...
Well, they were 50% of the, of the tax contribution.
Well, for at 3%, it'd be about $360,000, I'm assuming.
50% of...
3% if I...
Oh, 3%, correct, correct. And we're currently levying our maximum, you know, so that we couldn't increase, you know, we couldn't say, "Well, let's increase our own HRA levy and have our own control," because we're already levying the maximum possible. So the only way that we could potentially leverage additional dollars is to participate. But then that's on a application basis and, and project basis.
And again, I think if we go to, you know, what we want to put a dollar amounts, we get our, our money back, we already have a HRA, we're already putting money into the HRA.
I guess it also depends on, you know, looking at our comprehensive plan, and are we reaching our goals as a, as an HRA and as a city addressing affordable housing? It's an issue all over, but it's also an issue here in North St. Paul. And I guess that's, you know, warrants that, a robust conversation about the HRAs. Are we doing all that we can do to maintain affordable housing in our community? Because according to our comp plan, we're at 93% of affordable housing. We have naturally occurring affordable housing. That's a lot of our city. So how do we maintain that for our residents? Because we, gentrification is going to happen. So how do we maintain affordable housing in our community and in our surrounding communities? Because I think part of the trade-off is, you know, is if the surrounding communities don't build housing, we're going to probably be taxed for other things like social services, because treating and paying for, for homelessness and, and near homelessness is really expensive compared to housing. So that, that's kind of the trade-off and where I'm coming from in terms of, you know, that angle is, is it will come elsewhere if it doesn't get addressed in housing.
And I think this, so the council's aware, the, in talking to Commissioner Reinhardt also, there is, you know, this is all talked about affordable housing. But at least as she's explaining it, these dollars potentially would be available for a wide variety of use. I mean, they could be used for environmental cleanup, they could be used for facade improvements in the downtown, they could be used for a wide variety of thing, as she's describing it. And this is talked about affordable housing and maintaining that naturally reoccurring affordable housing and being able to make repairs and things on, on homes available. But it seems like they're, they're promoting this as a, as a wide-reaching possibility and not just affordable housing.
And I think it goes back to what Councilmember Wong says, is how, how are we moving forward now, looking at our HRA? I think we really need to take a, a good look at it. And are we using part of it for affordability and, you know?
And my comment to that, I think that's really something that we really need to take a hard, long look at, the direction with the HRA. Because the past, the past 11, 11 years of the HRA has been primarily used for our student build housing project. And those homes have not been affordable. I mean, they have been market rate housing that has been created out there to, you know, take out a blight out of a neighborhood or something like that. So they've really been created as, as a market rate housing. And is there, is there a change? Is there a different direction the council would like to go on that? With the, with the market that's out there today, with things, again, are we, are we more of an acting on, on more of an environmental cleanup, making these sites available to others? Are we doing, are we doing our own internal loan, loan programs? Something similar or different than what we did previously? How do, how do we restructure this? I mean, granted, we're only talking about, you know, what we're able to levy right now is what roughly $180,000 a year, I believe is what our HRA, and we're doing our maximum levy now. That's the only difference. We would not have access to, you know, potentially that $6 million pool, but it's an application process. It's something that you have to apply for. There's no guarantee that you would get it, but there's an opportunity there that you could, where what we're doing internally would limit us to that, you know, approximately $180,000 a year.
And it's funny, as, as we're doing all this redevelopment and improving the housing stock, our market values are going up, and we're losing that percentage, like you say, for affordable housing. It's almost like we're, you're doing something good, but you're also creating...
Exactly.
...gap between what we should be at.
Yeah, exactly.
We have to strike a balance, I think.
And I, that's the point. I don't know how we get to, you know, to maintain that, because the market values and everything have gone up. What was it, 16% in the last year have gone up?
Two years.
In the last two years, and they're just increasing. And, and some of the, I mean, these homes that are selling are unbelievably, the homes that sold, you know, 15, 17 years ago for $85,000 are selling that same house. Granted, they're, you know, over $300,000 today. And how do we, how do we maintain that, that level within the community? And what kind of programs can we offer to do that?
I guess we, I mean, we could talk about this all night, too, and...
Yeah, and I wanted to make sure that, you know, that you've seen that the links that, that were added here. So this was, your, your tab is additional information, Ramsey County HRA levy. So there are several different links that were added in here that Councilmember Wong had recommended that we, we add in here, a resource for you, for us to look at. But I certainly want to take the time to talk about this this evening here. And if there's any questions, we've got our finance is here also, if there's anything we can answer. You know, one of the things I've seen in, in St. Paul's resolution, same thing they called out, that they're, you know, retain their right to, to opt in now or opt out in, into the future. That's there, I want to make sure, you know, council's aware of that. If we, if we decide to opt in or opt out at this point, it's, it's not something forever. It can always be changed, but this would be for this upcoming tax year. If we opt in now, this would be for taxes '22 and basically programming for '23.
We can always opt in?
Yes.
Councilmember Wong?
Yeah, if I could just quickly run through a couple of the links. And the first one being the Minnesotacompass.org. And then there would be, at a glance, facts. And there's one that's cost burden households by type. And so just, just so we know that 30% of someone's income allocated to housing is considered cost burden. So at this point, well, from 2015 to 2019, and that could have changed now because we're in a whole different market, that 41.9%, so about 42% of our households are cost burdened. So that's people living and owning homes. And then renters, that's 58%. Oh, yeah, if there's a cost burden button just right up north there, yep. Yep. And so that's just something for us to think about when we're, as a baseline thing, for us to move for, toward, because that's pretty substantial if you compare it on a county level.
Do we have a, is it page, do we have a page number on that?
A page number on the...
That's a link.
Oh, it's a link, I apologize, yep. Which should be in the packet, because I think Jenny added it, so. But just, you know, for us to consider that, that's, that's where we've been and potentially the direction we're heading, because housing prices are going up. If you look at the income of our community, we have a very working-class community. So it, and correlated to that, one that has lower education comparatively. So not necessarily people are making more money at this point. Just something to, to consider. Any thoughts on that?
Well, I guess, I mean, I just struggle with trying to comprehend now how basically government is going to try to get involved with housing. I mean, I'm trying to, you know, basically look at things with, we've got a proposed budget increase of 9.9%. You know, this is certainly going to add to that if we were to participate. And there's all these things and programs and stuff. But meanwhile, you know, what's the core function of government? Is to provide essential services. And, and I know that means different things to different people, but to me, essential services are public safety, infrastructure, and just your essential, you know, operations here at City Hall. And, you know, we've got a lot of needs in the infrastructure realm. And I think this is outside of that core focus of what we should be looking at. So that's why I just have a really hard time getting behind a proposal like this. Especially when it's a unique situation where, you know, a lot of cities don't have that option to opt in or out. You know, we, North St. Paul and St. Paul does. Especially if, if there's no guarantee that there's not going to be a direct benefit to our residents for any of these programs, other than the argument that, well, we're in a bigger, broader picture with Ramsey County. But, you know, there are certainly arguments that can be made there. But, you know, I look at it as, we were elected to represent the best interest of North St. Paul, and it seems like we've got other things we need to focus on before we expand into these other areas of maybe, to me, in my opinion, outside of our core focus of what we need to be addressing. And that's essential services now. Obviously, housing is, is essential, but, you know, I don't know. Even if we were to participate and if we were to be guaranteed whatever we contribute, if it's $300,000 or even a million dollars, I mean, how much of a dent is that going to make in this? I think, you know, we've got a lot of projects on board right now that are privately driven, these apartment buildings and these townhome complexes. That's certainly, I think, in the long term, going to help ease the, the housing demand, and that might help this. But, you know, like you say, we can always opt in at any point. I mean, we could also just opt in now and opt out later. But, you know, from a perspective of being responsible to the taxpayers, I think at this point, this is just not something we should be getting into.
Councilmember, any other comments? Councilmember Peterson?
No, I, I'm agreeing with Councilmember Thorson. I just don't want to double tax our constituents at $45 a person. So I'm, I'm not in favor of it, thank you.
Councilmember Wong, you want to say anything more?
I, I just think that it's, it's, you know, if we have an HRA, we have an obligation. If we have a comp plan that was approved by city council to address affordable housing and make it livable, that's within our, our work as a city. And, you know, I am in favor. I've heard from also constituents in favor of this and how they've benefited from affordable housing options and homeownership. So it makes sense to me.
Councilmember Cole?
So is, is it an all-in or all-out, or is it a compromise? Would we be all-in with Ramsey County and forego North St. Paul? So there's not an additional cost to, basically, there would be a couple dollars more? Or is it, would it be maintain both or only maintain North St. Paul? I mean, are there, what are the options out here that, that we're looking at? Because I've got opinions every which direction, of course. Overall, I believe that HRA is, is critical. I think that the one that we currently have today can potentially work harder than, than what we've done with it. You know, again, it's just a lot of it is a manage, a, a matter of managing time and managing priorities. And I don't necessarily know if the HRA in North St. Paul has been given the priority of some of the, some of the other things, based on everything that's been going on in the, in the community, and if it's been utilized in the direction given. I've received emails on, on both sides of this. A couple of the, a couple of them were very, very compelling. And that with, without affordable housing, without, I, I, they use the word Section 8. I don't believe that's a term that we use anymore. But without that, they wouldn't have been able to get on their feet and work their way out of it there. So there are some, some positive things held. But I got to be honest with you, I'm just really leery jumping in right now. The wording that came out of St. Paul concerns me. I don't know how St. Paul would shore up their funding. Does that mean they get at least 50% every year? Does that mean they might, you know, they, they put a multi, you know, they put a large program together and they, they're guaranteeing themselves funding out of that pot as opposed to another community might have full access to that whole bucket of money one year for one project? I, I, I have concerns based, based on, on the way that it's been worded and presented to me. I would love to, my opinion, sit out year one and reevaluate and let some of the, let the county get some things squared away, let the City of St. Paul get a few things squared away, let some of the other neighboring communities that are, don't have a voice or have an opinion, and, and take a look at, at how that, how that opts in.
And it does say that with the City of St. Paul, that as long as this is authorized by the county... by the county, that at least 50% would be spent in. So it's not just a one-year thing, it's as long as this program is authorized by the county.
Right. But I mean, would they take 50% of it every year? Or would they take 100% of it one year? And it's, it's how they shore up the 50% was, was my question.
Correct.
I think the minimum is 50%.
Yes.
Annually.
Yeah, annually. So then they would, they would be competing for the other, the other 50% across all suburbs within the county.
Which could potentially limit the size and the scope of the other developments and things the other cities wanted to do.
Unless the county board takes some action to, to prevent that from happening.
So do we need to do a resolution then, or we just...
If, if there is not support to move forward, the only time we would need the resolution, if we were going to do the resolution, to give to the county to do the taxing. If we're not going to support it, it would just be a letter that I would send to the county that we will not be participating at this point.
I think we're kind of there. I don't think we need to vote on it.
No, if you're going to enter the...
The feeling that we're not...
If you're going to enter the program, I'd encourage you to vote because they've got an approved resolution there. But if it's not to enter it, there is no action necessary. But I do think it would be important to make sure that Scott sends in a letter so we don't leave him hanging.
Right, right. And that would be something that if that's, if that's kind of the consensus, that was something I'd do right away because the county is looking for, for that notice to be able to move forward because they need to take action here by the, by July 1st.
Everybody okay with that, with Scott sending the letter?
You want to betray?
You know, we can opt in at any, at any time here, so.
Correct.
We have that option. So, all right. I gotta get used to this new... Purchasing policy updates?
All right, yep. Our next item, I'll turn that over to our finance department, their finance director, and Kyle also to, to speak on the proposed updates on our purchasing policy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having me. So we just have some policy updates. We're looking for feedback from council based on auditors' recommendations. And they recommended that we edit the policy to include all increases to contact, contract price, whether through change orders or otherwise, be approved by a city council. And that when city council approves an increase to contract price, also consider requiring additional contractor bonds or vote to waive such bonds. And we put in some template language into our purchasing policy. And after reviewing it, we actually wanted to make one more additional edit to it. Here it is right here. So we just add a bullet point right on page three of the policy. That would indicate any increases to contract price, including change orders, amendments are to be approved in accordance with this purchasing matrix, this quick reference guide, for the total contract price, original plus subsequent increases to the contract, which may acquire additional approvals depending on if you go from one bucket to another. And... And just two more updates we had in here. Just under Appendix B in our purchasing policy. For any approved purchases that have subsequent increase in cost, increases are required to go through the same approval process as the original purchase. And then we're going to just add, along with any further approval, approvals required depending on the increase if it changes bucket. And this last portion on page 74 of your packet is just updating that language on the performance and payment bonds to include that council should review increases to contract price and determine if they would like an increase to the performance and payment bonds required. Any questions or feedback?
Do you feel pretty comfortable with these?
It's pretty boilerplate language you're going to be putting in there. And, you know, we spoke to our auditors on it. We feel pretty confident in it.
This would get the auditors off your back.
Yes.
Any questions for Kyle?
Kyle, can you go back to the language about how change orders will be processed? I think I understood what you said, but read the language a little differently.
Right here?
Yeah.
So we won't, as I mentioned, after looking it over, we wanted to add a little bit to, because if we just require the same approval process as the original purchase, if we buy something for 10 bucks, or say we're going to spend $10 and then come back saying, oh, it's actually going to be 30 grand. If we just do the same process, it'll just be under that first approval. So we're going to say any subsequent changes in approval as well.
The only thing I would raise with that is if we have a situation that is a quarter of a million dollars, so you have to use lowest responsible bidder. If we have a change order in the amount of five grand, I don't think you want to go through lowest responsible bidder for a $5,000 change order.
So, yeah, there could be, yeah, maybe it's not, what's the word for it? Maybe not the easiest, but it's technically what we should be doing.
Wow. Lowest responsible bid for a change order?
Well, just having city council reviewing it, the change order.
Yeah, I just, for any approved purchase that have subsequent increases in costs, the increases are required to go through the same approval process. Going back to council...
Oh, I see what you, yeah, so.
Council approval.
We, I can reference this.
Right.
This is what you made.
Clear reference to that, yeah.
Okay, yeah, for sure.
That's all I'm saying.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can you explain that again?
So I, I think what, in part, what the auditors were saying is if, if contracts are, you approve a contract, all contracts are brought to the council. You approve it, you see a price. If all of a sudden a bunch of change orders start to roll and we don't ever do back, come back and give you some look back on that or highlight it, we just run it through a list of claims. Candidly, the council, unless you catch it in the list of claims, is under the impression that the original contract amounts stood. So what we're saying is we have a purchasing policy in place that says, for these dollar amounts, here's how the process would look. I, I would recommend to just refer back to that grid, which I think is what Kyle is saying, too. And then do a reconciliation with the council. Look, the original bid came in at $250,000. We've met on site. There's another 10 grand worth of work that needs to be done. We're going to go out and do the, the process of obtaining two quotes. We're not going to just necessarily give it to the underlying contractor. As a practical matter, your contractor on site usually has a bidding advantage at that point because they're not going to have mobilization costs. Or they'll already have product in space. But we are saying we're going to do our due diligence and see if we get the lowest number. What I didn't want to see, when I read this, go back through the original process, the original process to do a $250,000 project is pretty encumbering with, you know, publications and notices and stuff like that. So for a $5,000 change order, I would encourage you to just go back to your grid, which says, you know, go grab two quotes or direct negotiation, which is what the law allows for, in my opinion. But, so there's that, the process to get that change order. But then there's the reconciliation with the council to know that, hey, this project is now coming in 10 grand over the original bid. I would just clear that up to make sure we're going to rely on the grid, not the original process as well.
You can do that?
Yeah, and I'll make sure to run it by...
Any questions for Kyle?
Well, as far as clearing up audit comments, I mean, we could, we can do all sorts of modifications. It's just the policies need to be followed. That's how, that's how the audit comments go away, is if we follow the policies. And I have no problem with these. I think this is the exact example that I shared in that, you know, if Mack and Meyer for hire are constantly the low responsible bid and they get the bid, but they know, well, North St. Paul, they never question change orders. And then they constantly end up being, at the end of the day, or end of the project, the highest bid. You know, doesn't that just kind of circumvent the whole lowest responsible bid process? So that's kind of, I think, what this addresses is that, you know, when we have these change orders, and they're, they're bound to happen for various reasons, we still need to look into it just to add that level of protection for us to make sure that we're not, people aren't gaming the system and, and doing things knowing that, well, we know what it takes to get the lowest bid. We've done work before, we'll make it up through change orders. You know, that stuff needs to be monitored closely. And to have this in part of the policy, I think, just makes sense, especially if the auditors are recommending it. Certainly something we should look at approving.
And, and the change orders would also only be approved, it would be consistent with the spec of the job. So if the, if the spec called out for the, you know, the work to be done, and it was the, the work that the change order was caused from was something that was clearly outside of the spec, but, so our, our engineering consultants, WSB and things like that, that's something that's watched closely that if there's a change order that comes in, is it a change order because it was not specified in the work? Or why, what's, what's triggering the, the cause for a change order?
Another question, just mainly about the purchasing policy. And going through here, and I had this question before. Do we have any kind of language that recognizes who has authority to make purchases on behalf of the city? Is there any language in, I mean, I, I guess where I'm getting at here is, would it make sense for us to adopt on another amendment to just clearly outline that only authorized city personnel can make purchases on city accounts? So an example might be if we have a subcontractor that we use work for, but then they go and make purchases on behalf of the city, are they authorized to do that? Or do they need to run it through the department or the city manager or whatever? Is that, is there any language in our purchasing policy currently that addresses that?
I can review it further and get you, get back to you on that. I'd have to...
I would definitely support and make sure that that's in there.
Scott, do you mean beyond the grid that they had up there? Because it laid out dollar amounts and who can make...
Well, yeah, I'm just saying in general, like, do we have an outline of only authorized personnel can make purchases on behalf of the city? And then further define who is an authorized personnel? So is it, you know, the finance director, public works director, electric superintendent, city manager? And then if, if, you know, down the road, we say, well, we really need the city clerk to also be authorized to make purchases, we'd add her to that list. And then that way, you know, if certain circumstances arise where there's vendors doing work on behalf of the city, and they know that, well, we know the city of North St. Paul has a contract with Home Depot, we're going up there to buy some stuff for this project. Let's buy some, you know, power tools, too, and, and see if they catch it, you know? They wouldn't be allowed to do that because they're not authorized to make purchases on our account. They can make purchases on their own account and then turn around and bill it to us, which I think is kind of normal practice, but...
That, that should definitely be part of the policy.
I would, I would agree with that. Kyle?
So it doesn't specifically say only employees or specified employees, but inherently all expenditures made by city employees?
Yeah, okay, so that is under the, the public purpose.
Yeah.
So I was looking at...
Not specifically saying who...
Didn't seem like in our, in our city's purchasing policy as a whole. It addresses several areas, but it doesn't necessarily define who is authorized to make purchases on behalf of the city and who those people are. And again, that example of, you know, we hire Mack and Meyer to, to paint the wall, and they come in and they start painting the wall, and they run to Home Depot and they buy a bunch of stuff on our account. Say, oh, charge it to the city of North St. Paul. You know, that, I think, puts us in a position to where unless we have someone that's watching every single purchase like that and make sure that stuff like that isn't happening, it creates an opportunity for a subcontractor or someone to, to make unauthorized charges on our account that aren't related to the work that they were hired to do.
And I, and I think I would also take it a step farther than that also is that these accounts that are set up with vendors be reviewed on a, you know, minimally on an annual basis because some of these, you know, people could be added to the account on whether those employees are, are still here or not. Those names may be still listed on accounts that are out there that, so that, that we follow that up on, you know, whether it's semi-annually or, you know, whatever it might be. But to make sure that any of those are updated and, and updated annually on a minimum basis.
I'm assuming we do have a list of the vendors that we work with?
Sure.
Ah, yes, we would have that in AP.
We would have that. And then do we...
Oh, sorry. A lot of the ways we can, it's just known vendors as well. We can, you know, Menards, Home Depot, that, those kind of...
And then we have accounts with them?
Yeah.
The, the list goes on, you know, all over. You know, and as employees leave, to, to make sure that we take it upon ourselves to go back and make sure that that employee's been removed from an authorized purchaser of the city. Maybe that employee is no longer here and they're still on the account for a year. Who knows, whatever. A lot of times if that, you know, the next time a new employee comes on, to make sure the old ones are removed or any updates. So they, summer, summer seasonal help, for example. That might be out authorized to go purchase, you know, is purchasing gas for mowers or things like that. And to make sure that those are updated constantly on a seasonal basis to make sure that they're removed and not left on.
How do these vendors work? If you go to a cashier at Menards and you just say, city of North St. Paul, I don't think they're looking at you as, does it have it on, on there? Who's, who's required to make the purchase? Or do you just...
They've got, again, they've got a list of authorized people, lots of, of names. But again, that list of names could have been there for...
10 years.
Yeah, exactly. So I think that's, those are a couple of really good points to make sure that we, that we put in place with this.
City Attorney, you look confused.
I think the, well, I'm just not familiar with the process of buying on, on the account in terms of what verification is required. The, I think a lot of cities use a credit card, the, you know, and then only those who've been issued it by the department. I mean, do we really keep a list of names at Menards?
Yeah, yeah, they do.
They should keep that list.
Yeah, they, the Menards would keep the list or those, keep those lists.
Or maybe we just eliminate that completely and we say, if you want to go to Home Depot, you have to use the only department-issued credit card. And that's how, there is no purchasing on account.
Right.
Just get rid of all that.
Yep.
I mean, that would end this completely and we wouldn't even need to comment on it because we're, we don't have an account at Home Depot. We don't have an account at Menards. You need to go up there, you have to have the, the manager, the authorized purchaser, which would be the department head. And I think that's why this is probably done because it's, you know, to avoid the department head having to make nine trips up to Ace Hardware when they were here, five various things. They had to count. Go up there, tell them you're with the city. You know, they ask you for a PO, say it's for Casey Park or whatever it is they're working on. But, you know, that opens us up for some precarious situations. I think also, you know, on page six now, the purchasing policy, I guess that, I don't know if that would make sense to add it in this section of the ethics relations with vendors. But, you know, another, another thing we might want to consider adding is some sort of provision that where, if we're using a contractor and you are in a position with the city, you, you're not allowed to use them personally. And so an example might be if TA Schiffskis is, is doing paving and our public works director wants to have his asphalt driveway replaced, he can't use them because there could be at least the appearance of, well, you know, there's some kickback or something going on. I mean, something where we're separating out the... the use of city personnel using city vendors. I don't know if that's kind of standard language in other cities or something, but I think that might make sense to consider just to add in as another protection for the city.
And I would question City Attorney, what do you see in other cities?
I'm familiar with the nepotism issues, you know, if you use friends, family, you know, whatever, there's concerns about that, and your personnel policy does have a provision on that, whether that squarely addresses what you're talking about, Councilmember Thorson. The prohibiting employees from using vendors, so, I mean, technically, Home Depot and Menards are vendors. Are we saying you can't go shop at Home Depot because you worked for the city of North St. Paul?
Okay, maybe I phrased that wrong. That's obviously not the kind of example I'm thinking of. I think, okay, so what if it's, if you are in a position to authorize or award a bid, okay? If you are in a position to award a bid to any, for a contract for any type of work?
Right.
There should be some verbiage or language or understanding or just our city policy that says, you know, if our public works director is in charge of awarding bids, you know, if we're going to do a landscaping project at Casey Park from Mack and Meyer for higher landscaping, it's probably inappropriate for that individual to use Mack and Meyer for higher landscaping at his own home. It just doesn't, appearances aren't well, and, you know, there certainly is situations that may arise that could create some inappropriate circumstances. So it's certainly not to say, hey, welcome to the city of North St. Paul, hope you don't shop at Home Depot, because you're not allowed to do that anymore. I mean, that's not at all what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is that type of particular circumstance. If you're, if you're awarding contracts for bids, you shouldn't be using contractors of that work at your own personal home or your cabin or whatever. That's all.
Yeah, no, I think I do get your point. The idea is, is look, I'm going to guarantee you a bunch of work through the city at full rate, but now that you come over to my house, I want a discount to make sure that it keeps rolling at the city. That, that was a previous problem, not necessarily here, but that is something that's been dealt with. We, I can look into the language, the exact verbiage on that, if that's something we're interested in. But I'm assuming we want to dial in on the kind of vendors, if it was, well, like, you know, to have your driveway replaced, or if somebody we're routinely using that comes in at the two to three grand, so it's kind of direct negotiation with the city anyway. We want to make sure that that process isn't being abused or favors aren't being given.
Yeah, just, you know, because I'm just thinking off the top of my head, what circumstances may, where this chart, if it's anything less than $20,000, I mean, there's all sorts of, you know, concrete patching on throughout the city. I mean, if you're, hey, I got a slab of concrete, I need to pour it up north. You know, I'll make sure you get the job if you can help me out on it. There's those sorts of things where if we have this in there, it's just, you know, and if it were to happen, they can't use an excuse of, well, I didn't know, I didn't know I couldn't do that, it didn't say so. I mean, you think these things are kind of given and understood, that you don't have to spell it out in a ethics and relations with vendors. But, you know, I think it's, while we're on the subject, it might make sense to look into that.
One of the other processes that'll be coming along with this with our Open Gov software is a purchase order system. Many years ago, we had purchase orders that were used across the board for all purchases, no matter how big or small they were. That has not been in place for a number of years. And part of the, part of the process here will be having a purchase order system back in place.
May I?
Ms. Wang.
Yeah, I think that investigating the language is really critical because I think a lot of folks try to contract locally too. And so I can see where there may be concerns about, you know, the appearance of, or, you know, usage of one vendor or what have you. But I think the language certainly is, is going to be key there just because, you know, people like to support local too, whether we're the city or people in the community.
Can you scroll up a little bit? That's actually right, we have a local vendors provision in here. Where city employees will make every effort to purchase goods and services from local vendors and award purchases to those vendors. When cost-effective, this can be accomplished by incurring that local and state vendors who have goods or services available are included in the competitive shopping process that will precede most purchases, so.
I suppose that's where it gets a little difficult in regards to...
Well, and that's where you're trying to achieve a balance. It certainly makes, we understand the local vendor provision, why it's there. With that said, we can't turn it into an unfair environment where we're feeding information to the local vendor to make sure they get the contract too. So there's a, it's trying to achieve a balance. I think it does a decent job on that. As it relates to Councilmember Thorson's point about then how do we use some of these vendors, I think we can tweak that a little bit. But I, as I understand it, we're not talking about all vendors. We're really talking about sort of the more discretionary vendor situations.
Yeah, I mean, I...
Because truly, you know, I knew you weren't talking about Home Depot, but they are a vendor where we spend some money.
Yeah, and even the drive, I mean, again, I'm not trying to say like, well, now that you're an employee here, I hope you don't ever need a driveway because you're not allowed to ever use Schiffskis. You know, and it's just if you are in a position to award a contract or something like that, which is very few people in the city, the way we're structured, there should be some language in there that states, you know, there should be some separation or, you know, just to avoid even the perception of, you know, that. But I think everyone understands the point I'm trying to make here.
Yep.
So we'll have, we'll go through some of this stuff and update the items that Kyle was talking about and the items that you've talked about now. Have our city attorney review it and bring it back for your consideration.
Anything else, Kyle, on the policies?
Nothing further.
Any questions for Kyle? Okay. Civic clerk implementation?
Mayor Council, the next item is our civic clerk implementation. And have Carrie talk about that. That changes some of the format that you've been seeing. And though everything right now is still coming out in a PDF version, eventually, coming soon, it will be in the program itself, and I'll let Carrie speak to that.
Welcome, Carrie.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. I hope you've, we've been through two packets now where you have seen our new tool in action. And we appreciate your understanding as we as staff learn how to manage this new tool. I just kind of want to update you on some of the many benefits that this is going to bring, not only to staff, but also to you as elected officials. I can tell you on Friday, we had a flurry of information that came in. And if we would have had to reconstruct this packet like we did even, you know, four or five months ago, I think we'd still be here working on it. The updates that came from Councilmember Wong, it was a few clicks and a drag, and we're able to get the most important information out. And I think that's really the thing we need to keep in mind, is what is the best way we can get you the information you need to make the important decisions for our city? So there's been a couple glitches, it's been a learning curve, but I'm really pleased with how well staff has worked with this. The other benefit we have is our team from WSB uses this tool with other cities. And we had some issues with them resolutions, and, you know, as an email to Eric, you know, three minutes later, he's logged into our system, he's updated the content. And the ability to be able to do that kind of on the fly and get everything together really is going to be hopefully a huge benefit to you and to our residents as we get this stuff together. I don't think, I know I myself, when I first started here with the city, didn't realize all of the hands that go into a packet. You know, there's stuff coming from the county, there's stuff coming from staff, there's stuff coming from our legal. And so this has really been a good way for us to build these tools. So what you've seen the last couple times, and those of you who have been on Parks Commission, we've also, in Planning Commission, we've put a couple agendas out in that tool as well. So you've kind of seen the look and feel of it. The big reason we went to Civic Clerk was, again, to streamline the efficiency and the effectiveness of how we could put these packets together. So if you look in your packet, these are the meeting types that we're going to move into this tool here. We're going to, City Council, HRA, Arts and Culture Commission, our Economic Development Authority, Parks and Recreation, Planning, Fire, Police Department. We also recently, after discussing with city staff, are going to add in a separate city workshop meeting type. And that's due to the different Zoom links that we have. And so in order to protect any, you know, inadvertent errors that we may have, and the workshops also have a little bit of a different meeting structure, we will have a separate meeting type for the workshop as well. So where we're at right now is we're just about ready to give you, our elected officials, access to the backend of our tool. And I wanted to make sure that I had a moment to speak to you about it. I didn't want you to get some email and wonder like if it's spam as we set up your accounts. I did create, if you look, there's a link in the packet here. I did load a video on our website for you to watch that kind of talks about, as elected official, what's the best way to use this tool? Some of the things, and you're sitting here and watching you guys tonight, that'll be really helpful for you is there's a way for you to go into those meeting packets and put your questions in, annotate, highlight things, put your questions in. See, things that will help our meetings run better and help you to be better prepared. The other feature, and we really haven't done it yet, but there is a search function in this tool where we can put in different hashtags. So if there are certain projects that we're following along, we'll create a hashtag. And so that way, whenever you want to search the tool, it'll bring up any resolutions, any items that we've done. And I really would ask that you, as our council members, would maybe let me know or let staff know the things that are really kind of near and dear to your heart that you want to follow, so that we can put those tracking tools in there for you as well. So the next steps is our vendor is going to capture the data from our existing website. So there will be some history that's going to move into this. We decided that 2020 was maybe not the finest year for any cities, so we're going to go back and pull everything in from 2019 going forward. So there will be some history in there for you to be able to review and search. You'll get your login, you'll be able to log right into the tool and see the packet that staff has assembled for you. That will get away from this kind of crazy download and stuff off the shared drive and finding those kinds of links. The nice thing about that is there's one agenda. You don't have to worry about, oh, does somebody, did somebody pull an old agenda and there was an update I missed? That won't happen anymore because you're going to all log into the portal and see the existing information as it is there. So I think that's going to be a big help. The other big help for us as staff is that instead of all these emails flying around between all of our offices, oh, put this in the packet, Jenny, put this in the packet. Everything gets uploaded directly from staff, so there's no, oh, I didn't grab the right version. It's going to really, really help us clean up and tighten some of the information that gets presented to you as council members. So tomorrow, I will be sending to Civic Clerk your email addresses, they'll come to your city email addresses for you to log in and set up your portal. There's been some, another big reason we wanted to go to this was we've struggled with trying to just put things together in Adobe PDF to have the bookmarks work. This tool, the Bookmarks, work quite a bit better. Those of you, I understand a lot of you are accessing the meeting on iPads. There is an app, there's a couple of different apps that you can download that will help you with that navigation on your tablet devices. And what I'll do is I'll kind of put together a couple recommended apps and some screenshots to help you, kind of coach you through that setup. Again, if you have any issues, I'm certainly available. You know, bring your laptop, bring your tablet to City Hall, and we'll sit down and get it working for you. But in theory, you'll be able to log into the portal, you won't need to worry about that because as you're working on Civic Clerk in your elected official's portal, all the bookmarks will be right there for you to kind of scroll right through. Is there any questions I can answer for anybody?
I like the idea of being able to come in and sit down and you can run everything.
We'll have like, we'll have like a Civic Clerk party.
There we go.
No, I'm really happy, and I, and I have to say, I am so proud of staff because in the little over a year I've been here, we have brought on so many new programs and so much new technology. I'm surprised they haven't chased me out of town, frankly. But I'm so proud of staff, they have really worked hard. Everybody's working the best they can to really clean up some of our processes, clean up this information flow so that we can get it out. So there'll be a whole new module that will take place on our website. If you look in now, there's kind of that goofy agenda module. And so all of our Civic Clerk meetings, as soon as we're ready, as soon as I say, yep, we're ready, they will pull that different module and add the Civic Clerk module into our website. So also for our residents too, it'll be a lot easier for them to log in and see, oh, here's the meeting, here's the link, here's the Zoom link, and here's my agenda, so that our residents can follow along with us as well.
And I think that's another very important part of this, is how the residents are going to be able to log in and to get the information.
There is going to be a little bit of a communication challenge for us, and I left it in my planner on the floor. But we do have residents who've subscribed for alerts. And I took a look at that because I thought, you know, we're going to have to notify them. There's not a good way for me to export that connection data and put it into the new tool. It has to do with a lot of data privacy stuff and issues that Civic Clerk deals with. I think there's like 57 people that subscribe for council updates, 37 for EDA. They weren't huge numbers, and that kind of thought, well, this will make my job easier. But then it kind of made me sad that there's so few people that are following our agendas. So what we'll do is I will export that data and we'll work, we'll send a series of emails out and texts, or however these people have opted to communicate with the city, to let them know about the new tool and how, where they can sign up to continue to get the alerts that they've gotten. As part of that, I hope we can, through our web channels and our social media, really encourage our residents, you know, to take a fresh look, log in and follow our meetings and take a look at our agendas. So there's going to be a little bit of a housekeeping, there'll be a little bit of growing pains there as we transition that. But once I got a chance to log in and look at the backend of our system, it's not as significant as I thought it would be.
Is there an app function that the public can access it like we can?
They will, but theirs will be the front-end app. So they'll come from the website and they'll log into the meeting and download the agenda. They could download it into any kind of PDF marker they want and make their own notes on it. But they certainly don't have the functionality that elected officials will have. But there's so often, when I'm watching these meetings, you know, people are scrambling through paper and looking, and I just, I'm a tech geek, I'll admit it, but to be able to search and make notes and go back and reference it, oh, in this other meeting, and all those notes that you make into your meeting packets stay there. You know, you hit save and they're there. So six months later, we're dealing with the same issue. You want to go back and look at what your questions were, were they answered? Did I get the information that I requested? You'll have a much easier way to go back through your portal and take a look at that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I really encourage you, there's, I have the link there to the website, I do have a page there so you can log in. It's a cute little video that shows you the tools that are available to you as elected people. And I will put together some cheat sheets for you and some screenshots on how to use some of these apps to make them work on your iPad, if that's how you choose to do it. If you totally don't want to embrace our new technology, you can download the PDF just like you always have. But I hope that you'll take advantage of these new tools. And again, I really encourage you to reach out to staff. If there's something that you're passionate and you want to follow about and you want us to tag some of these items so that we can follow them through the process here, we're happy to do that.
So are iPads technology-friendly with Civic Clerk?
Hmm.
Okay.
Hmm, yeah, and I just, I think even some of the things we've done graphic-wise, appealing to our packet to get them branded with our city, add some different fonts and white spaces too. I think the easier things are on the eye. Again, I'm speaking from my graphic, you know, snobbiness of doing websites for years, but the easier things are on the eye, the more likely people are to read them. And that's some of the stuff that we're working with as well, so that our content for our residents, for our elected officials, is easily accessible, easy on the eyes, you know, really easy to follow, easy to bounce through the bookmarks to see the other resources that are put together for you.
I know, Carrie, you've been working very, very hard on this and...
See the gray hair?
Yeah, but I, I know there is glitches too, and, you know...
It's been a learning curve, but I am so, so proud of the staff here at North St. Paul because some of the programs we've put in place here, we have turned the way they do their jobs absolutely upside down. And when I see the building permits flowing through Open Gov, when I see packets being put together, when I see our park rentals are running seamlessly, pinging all weekend long, you know, those are huge changes to how city staff have done their jobs. And the team here has been nothing but willing to learn, willing to ask questions, and every single day we try to make it better.
We should get a 360 review on Carrie and staff, just to see how you're...
I think the other thing that shows out with this is that, you know, we've always talked about over years...
about how the community would embrace, you know, internet-based programs and things like that and the concerns with that. You know, I think initially on, when we started talking about that, we were talking about, are we going to have to have some ways to promote this, to sell it, to implement it? And these things just took off on their own. I mean, Carrie can comment on when we were starting this. We had one of the programs that wasn't even ready yet, but it had a public facing and people were utilizing it immediately.
Is this where I get fired because I didn't promote it? Alls I did is switch a couple of links on the website and Open Gov took off. We've never, we've talked about the cities going to this, but we've never promoted it. We just made sure that the website worked, that the instructions were in place. I've had a couple of other cities call me and they're going, well, we're at Open Gov and we're not getting any of our stuff. And I logged on their website. I go, I can tell you exactly why, you haven't made it easy for people to find it. But again, you know, this was a really huge change for staff and for all of us. And I got a crash course in permits. I think I can, electrical still scare the daylights out of me, but I can do a building permit. But again, this is, this doesn't happen in a vacuum. There's a great team of people here at City Hall that are asking questions, challenging things to be better and really doing our best. We've had some hiccups, there's a learning curve. But when I think of what this team here has accomplished in the last year, I couldn't be prouder.
Good, thank you very much. Councilmember.
Yeah, just real quick, sorry, I know you probably want to get out of here, but. So was I understanding you correctly when you said as the council packet is being constructed, we as a council will have access to that as it's being put together?
Yep, as long as we have it public, you will see what's there.
And then, so just like Councilmember Wong was able to send you information that got updated that, so if, I guess, for an example, if, like last week, I believe, yeah, John's here. He pointed out, and I think it was the Met Council application, that there is an incorrect name. It was an old staff name. So if we were, if that was updated at some point, we could log in and as we're going through, we could just click and highlight it and we could change it to correct it?
No, we would have to, we would correct it.
But we could highlight it and send some notification?
And in fairness, staff did talk about that was a historical document. So we don't think it was an correction.
Okay, well, that's what I, you know, maybe the correct one had the right stuff, but just whatever.
And we talked too, you know.
Yeah, but, and that's a good scenario where, you know, and I had that same question too. Could the public log in and provide feedback at that? Because the way it works now is basically Friday at 4:30, the packet's uploaded.
And we try, I can't tell you how hard we try to have that be earlier. But things are moving fast and we want to get the most complete information. And I know there's been comments about, oh, there's multiple agendas. It's because we're trying to make them perfect. There was a spacing that was off, there was a font that was off, and we fixed it.
Sure, but, and, but I guess my, just, and I'm sure once we use it more, we'll understand it. But from my understanding is as this stuff gets uploaded, because there's some times where there's a three-week period of time where we don't have meeting. And if we know, well, there's some rough agenda put on there and some rough material.
You'll be able to log into the portal and see as it is.
We can log in and see that way ahead of time. And then if we have additional information, we say, hey, you know.
Or if that triggers something like, oh, I need staff to look into something else because I didn't think about this.
So it'll be a little more interactive?
And even for staff, I can tell you, we are building packets into July already because there's certain housekeeping things that we know we need to have in place. And this gives us a better tool to do it. And frankly, I mean, really, Councilmember Wong, that attachment you sent, if we were doing it the old-fashioned way, we would have all been running out of City Hall because that would have broke all of our links, it would have messed up our page numbers, and there would have been tears. Now it was like, oh, do, 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 out it goes.
Right, but it will help, to Councilmember Thorson's comment, it will help build the agenda because of, you know, as we're building it right now, we're building it based on what we know. And as that's coming together, if there is information that you'd like to add or a subject, that's a great way to be able to do it.
I mean, our ultimate goal is to make it easy and complete so you can make the best decisions, is to make it accessible and readable so that our residents can see the information you're basing your decisions on.
But we're not adding topics, you know, like you said, are we be able to, council members want to put something into a, for this workshop or whatever? We're not going to be adding.
You wouldn't add it, but at least you can see what's there and then you can interact with staff right away to say, I'd like to add this because I didn't see this in the agenda or this has triggered another idea, I'd like to add this to it, yes.
But I am really excited about the noting and the highlighting and stuff because I just think it's going to make our meetings run smoother and as elected officials will help you be more prepared. I mean, that's what people elected you to do, was to make notes and ask questions. And this tool will make that a lot easier for you to do. But I just, again, I can't say enough, our phone call away, or an email away, walk in. The only way it's going to work is if we all work together and we are more than happy to answer questions, to do some test runs with you on your portal and on your bookmarks and whatever way we can help. And if you have suggestions on how things could be better, you know, don't sit on them, let us know. And we'll check, some things we can fix, some things we can't.
Right.
I was, what else was going to talk, yeah.
I'm sorry, I just had a clarification on the noting and highlighting piece because I am very excited about that.
You can pick your colors of your highlighter too.
Sorry about this, but I'm way more excited. So as we make comments and highlights and things, is that per our own, for our own?
Correct.
Visibility or is that?
Yeah, no, it's private. Whatever is saved in your account is your private notes. Those aren't published out to the, out to the public. But you can, you draw arrows, you can highlight, you can make notes, you can put like digital Post-it notes on certain areas.
Yeah, I just didn't know if people wanted to read my chicken scratch, so.
I think we should clarify.
We could maybe, you know, if you wanted to.
This is a great point, I'm glad you asked that. But if someone does a data request for Councilmember Wong's notes, is that, that has to be provided, correct?
It's in the portal.
Right.
It would be available.
Right, no, that, I'm just saying.
They could say, boy, she has good taste in highlighter color.
Just so we all have a clear understanding that you can make all the notes you want, but it's still public information if they want to request it, so.
Councilmember Cole.
Councilmember Wong asked the same question about, that's, no, it's fine.
But again.
And if I make notes in my copy, I, I, I mean, I mean, does that?
For your use only.
But can someone ask to see?
I, I suppose somebody could. It's not really like you're changing the content, you're writing a note like, I make sure I ask city manager about this, or I'd like more information on this. I mean, I don't think you're changing the function of government. You're making notes to help yourself be prepared for the meeting and to raise the questions that you want to ask as a council member or a commissioner or whatever board you're on.
I think city attorney would love to.
Well, I don't know the pure answer to it. What I'll tell you is data is presumed public and your individual notes plus the packet are in the city's possession. So whether, you know, if they ask for, I want to see Councilmember Thorson's portal with his notes, I can't immediately think of a reason why we could deny it. But there are some opinions out there on note-taking and things of that nature in terms of whether it truly qualifies as government data or personal. I just, I need to take a second look at that. But it's a legitimate question because, because you, you.
It's different than like me doing this, right? Because this is not, I mean, I guess someone could request these too, right? I mean, but I just wanted to clarify that. So I want to add the impression that you can just, you know, write whatever and that no one will see.
Don't say bad things about staff or we'll feel. But again, I just want you to know that we will do everything we can within our power to make sure that people who have subscribed for our updates transfer, you know, seamlessly into this new tool. And now that I know kind of what our benchmarks are, I hope we can grow those numbers and we can have more of our residents who are actively getting notifications when we're publishing agendas. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie, very much. I'm going to put a hard stop here in about five minutes because they need 10 minutes to turn over the, so if we could just get a quick update, operational updates.
So just a couple of real quick things. So QuickTrip is getting geared up to get their project started. Actually planning to start talking about installing water main and things. They had a little, had a little misfire with their plan that they had put through. They missed installing a fire protection system in their building, a fire sprinkler system. In some locations, they do not have to do that, depending on, you know, rural areas or where they might be building. In North St. Paul here and many of the cities around us here, we've adopted the Code 1306, which requires fire sprinkler systems. And that was omitted from this project. So they're, they're scurrying to get that put in place because that directly affects water main and things that they're putting into the building. But everything is moving along quickly. QuickTrip is outstanding to work with. They, they have everything planned out, prepared. And their, their time commitment to build this is, as we talked about before, they were in the building today for the first time, started, today was their first day of starting their job fair. And, you know, when you think about a convenience gas store such as what they are, the number of employees that they're looking to hire from our community to work there is pretty amazing. They're looking at a minimum of hiring 55 employees to work at that, at that store. So it's a, it's a good, good effect for our community. And today was their first day in the building here to promote their hiring process. Just wanted to give you a little update, we're moving along very well with the hiring process for our police chief, our position of open police chief, and also finance director position. Civil Service Commission had worked all through the past week on doing interviews. We've got that narrowed down and really hoping to have something coming forward with that by the weekend. And moving along, the same process with the, with the finance director position. One thing I just wanted to bring up real quick for thought, and this is something that we're going to have to bring back and talk about on processes for our park rentals. Couple of years ago, we eliminated the deposits on park rentals. And unfortunately, I think it's something that we're going to definitely have to look at reinstating. This weekend was, was no different from what we've been experiencing recently. Just the, to some extent, the disrespect and the, what's left, what's left over after these picnics and parties in the buildings is getting, getting out of control. We had it at Casey Park this weekend and we also had the same thing at Howie Park this weekend. So it's something that we, I just wanted to get out there on your radar, but it's something that we're going to need to bring back soon as we're, we're becoming heavy into the season and it's, it's unfortunate.
Councilmember Cole.
Is that something, Scott, we can enact whenever?
Yes.
Or, okay, so.
Yep, we can, we could do it right away with, with council approval. Like I said, we, we eliminated the deposit that we had and we did that a couple of years ago because we were, we were taking deposits and for a long time, we were had, you know, if we had one bad one through the year was, was good, but, and dealt with it. But this has just been becoming very repetitive and it's very concerning. I also had conversation this afternoon with Sheriff Fletcher because some of the, a lot of these are, some of these are, you know, out of, out of the city. And I was talking to them about what they're might be seeing in their parks and things going on. So just a lot of, a lot of things are different this year, you know, whether it's coming out of COVID and people are, are back out and doing things. But we didn't experience what we're experiencing right now prior to.
That was actually a follow-up, I was going to ask you on, over break, was what was, what was property left looking like after yesterday?
Yeah, parking lot, grounds, everything else was just in, in total disrepair and cleanup. And it's just, it's just a mess. You know, as far as people using trash barrels and things like that, I mean, yes, some of them do. But a lot of the stuff is just thrown in the ground and left in total disregard.
Councilmember Thorson.
Is this something that we've just seen exclusively to these enclosed shelters? Or is this same behavior going on at every park or what?
Yeah, I think, well, Howie Park, Silver Lake, the Silver Lake Open Air Shelter, you know, and those are, they're not necessarily always rented per se. It's open to the general, to the general public. But just, just the respect for, for our parks and facilities and keeping them clean and picked up is a pretty dramatic change, what we're seeing right now.
Anything else?
That's good for you.
Yep, motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilmember Cole, seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Any discussion? If not, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned. Meeting in order. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Like to welcome everybody. This time, Jenny, if you could take the roll call.
Councilmember Thorson.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Mayor Furlong.
Here. Coram is present. This time, motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll move, Your Honor.
Moved by council member Peterson.
Second.
Second by council member Thorson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is adopted at this time. We have a couple of presentations, and the first one is, we're going to recognize our police chief. Tom, if you want to come up to the podium here. Come on, you've had, what, thirty-some years of this? And.
You always defer to the mayor.
Yeah, right. Gives me great pleasure, you know, again, we talked the other day, and for you to be honored tonight for all your years of service. On behalf of the, I'll read this here, on behalf of the City of North St. Paul and North St. Paul Police Department, we'd like to recognize thirty-nine oh one, Chief Thomas Loth, for thirty-two years and thirty-two days of loyal service in law enforcement. His dedication to the North St. Paul Police Department and the City of North St. Paul is greatly appreciated. Chief, you have led the North St. Paul Police Department to what it is today, building a strong relationship with the community while rising to every occasion with the utmost professionalism. The staff of the North St. Paul Police Department is proud to have been under your direction and thanks you for your commitment to the department and community. Now going into the next chapter of your life, may God's blessings be upon you as you follow in his way, and may you find joy and peace as he inspires you every day. Chief Loth, best wishes in all your future endeavors. Happy retirement, thirty-nine oh one.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, we kind of grew up in the same neighborhood together, and we're close to the same age, kind of know the same people. But I want to really thank you for all your years of service. Went fast, and now you're at the retirement side, and we had a good discussion the other day of what you plan on doing and what works. But I also like to give you this plaque, and that is Chief of Police Thomas A. Loth, the mayor, city council, and city manager, wish to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation to you on your retirement from the North St. Paul Police Department. You provided outstanding, loyal, and dedicated service to our entire community for over thirty-two years and thirty-two days. We extend our best wishes for a long, happy, and healthy retirement. Thank you for your job well done, May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. So, Tom, again, I really do appreciate it. And I know you'd love to say a couple of words about all the good things that you've done and we've done.
Heard enough from me over the years, you know, some would say, hey, that's enough. I'd just like to say a couple of things. It's been great to be part of the North St. Paul family. It really has. I mean, back when I started here, as I said, you know, everything's changed. There's no longer either any of the police officers I started with. City councils all changed, police civil service has changed, you know, and I guess that's some of the trick to longevity there is out surviving everybody, you know, and that sort of thing. So it just is, it's just, there's been so many good relationships with all the departments throughout, you know, the city and growing up and stuff, and growing with the city and getting there and having the belief of the then councils and other people to have this opportunity and go forward. It's, you know, there's been consternation, a lot of change, and there always is in anything over these years and stuff. And it's really great to finally get to that end of it and look back and say, yeah, wow, you know, we did accomplish a lot, but very excited too for what's coming forward and stuff too, because, you know, it's time for new, it's time for change, and it's time for somebody else to lead it and everything like that, and to take it forward, to take it to the next step, which I believe for North St. Paul is going to be very good and very great. So, again, I just want to thank you all. It's been a great career. It's been a great life. I've raised five children, many grandchildren, and, you know, I couldn't ask for anything more, so thank you.
So what is your best story in North St. Paul as a police officer?
We can't really, the schools.
Not about me, but.
I want to get out of here with everybody liking me, okay? So we'll leave those ones there.
But policing has changed in the last thirty-two years. I mean, you've seen it from what it was thirty-two years ago as a patrol officer and what it is today, and it's completely different. And maybe just give us your little insight, help the guys that are, you know, moving up, what it's going to look like for them thirty-two years from now.
Whatever, thought to get here. I mean, we started out with the old, best police car ever made, the Chevrolet Caprice Classic. It really was, what a ride that was, with the old Jet Sonic light bars that whistled when you went down the road, when you got up in speed a little bit. So that was always fun to hear because you knew when one of the guys was going after somebody else on Old Thirty-six, remember that? Because you'd hear that whistling even before the sirens or anything else like that. So those things were fun. The radios were, those old radios, eight channels, and you just counted them off doing it like that, you know, and stuff. And it's not the digital, oh, everything there is today, and, you know, there was a specific thing for statewide and everything on there. It was just a totally different world. Computers, there weren't any in the squads, you know, I mean, it was pretty open, and we thought they were packed then. So what it's gotten to be is really something else. Even the radios, they were quite heavy that you wore at the time and stuff like that with it. The old, the old PR twenty-fours and stuff like that, that pretty much nobody uses anymore or anything like that, those types of things. And just as it just evolved going forward to everything, and eventually getting the MDTs, which everybody called the dumb terminal and everything, it just, you know, and eventually going to digital radios when I was a sergeant shortly before we became chief. Because I remember when we did that whole thing and getting on that, and that was just, wow, you know, what an upgrade that was. And just as squads have gotten better and better over the time, and they've packed more into them, and then the challenge of trying to keep them charged and not being dead, just because you're putting more and more demand on them. So it's, you know, and now we have hybrids, and aren't those a treat to drive? I mean, that's, wow. And, you know, I did get to drive one just for a little bit, just to do it because I wanted to say I had and stuff, and they're quiet, and they're quick too, right out of the hole. It's just amazing and stuff. And so, all that going forward with these guys who, many of them grew up with the things and stuff like that, and they're going to, that technology that I've seen change from nothing to where it is at today is only going to explode on you more, you know, so that's, it just, you know, keeps on doubling and stuff in shorter amount of time. And so it's really exciting to where that's going to be, you know, in the future and stuff like that. And just if I can say it too, out of.
You can say whatever you want.
It's been a lot of fun with all the officers, you know, always over all the years, but the group we have now is just really neat, cool, a bunch of people and stuff, young men and ladies and stuff. And unfortunately, looking back at some of the things from hiring them and stuff and remembering, a lot, not you guys, but a lot of them weren't even around when I became a police officer. So that's another reason to say, Tom, you've been here long enough. And so before I, you know, wear out my welcome here, I'd just like to say thank you all again and stuff like that. You've got a tremendous crew of officers going forward, and it'll be wonderful, so. All right? Thank you.
So I'd like to introduce you to our new acting chief, which is Ray Rosales. Ray, if you want to come up and maybe say a few words and maybe introduce the new sergeant also.
Absolutely.
You'll get your first role as chief.
All right, great. Don't let that great boy up because that guy would take my place in a push-up challenge. I'm pretty fit. I'm Ray Rosales. Been here since 2011.
If you can kind of stay by the mic if possible. Put it down.
There. Is that good? All right. So I started here at North St. Paul back in 2011 as a reserve officer, which is a volunteer service here. And during my two-year program at Inver Hills, I worked under Chief Loth, and shortly after graduating with my two-year, got offered a job position here as a patrol officer. And through that time, as a patrol officer, I got the opportunity to work in various positions such as Ramsey County Traffic Safety Initiative as coordinator for our department, moved up to investigations, field training officer. Then I got the opportunity to become the field training officer coordinator of the program with Sergeant Fredericks. And worked in investigations for just over a year, got promoted to sergeant, and lo and behold, I think it was just a few weeks, got offered the acting chief position. So it's been a great ride here at North St. Paul. It's been awesome working under Chief Loth's direction. My first day on the job, going into his office, shaking his hand, and he said he can't wait to see me grow as an officer. I wish he was talking more about my height, but professional career, he couldn't wait to see me grow. And I mentioned to him on his last day there, look at us now. So here we are, and it's surreal, sitting in his chair. It'll always be his chair in my eyes, and Chief Loth, thank you for everything you've taught me. It's been a privilege working under your direction, and I'm grateful for the knowledge you've given me moving forward. So I look forward to taking on this task and the responsibilities. So with that, as acting sergeant, Colin Betts has been promoted. I'll let him walk away.
I don't have a good of speech than that. I'm acting sergeant as of right now, kind of taking over Raymond's position. I got hired with the department back in 2012, just like Ray. Started out as a reserve and then shortly became a FTO on the reserve unit. And as that became, there was a position for a police officer, so I got hired back in 2014, started there as a police officer patrol, and then slowly worked my way into taking over Ray's position as TZD coordinator. As I wanted to take on more, became an FTO, so I also do a lot of field training. That's what our new hires, so we went and did that. After that, I wanted to do something a little bit more tactical, so I joined the SWAT team for East Metro SWAT, which is now Ramsey County SWAT. So I did that for about two years. And as of right now, I'm just taking on the acting role. So that's what I have, and that's kind of where I come from. And I want to thank Chief for everything that you've taught me, quite a lot, that I think I would stand a chance in law enforcement. So I thank Chief for giving me the opportunity to become who I am today, and a lot of it is because of what he's taught me, so.
Good. Thank you very much. And we've heard a lot of good things about both of you, but Ray, I want you to know that do not have your office like Tom had it, because he had way too much, way too much paperwork in that office.
It's a little bit clear.
Okay.
It's progressive.
Well, thank you, thank you all, and again, congratulations to all three of you and Tom and your retirement, and as you write off into the sunset, come back and visit us. So, thank you.
Mayor, if I could, just, yeah, again, I just want to congratulate Tom for all the work over all the years. It's been outstanding, and relationships, obviously, through different departments, myself with him, and fire and everything through all the years. But been a pleasure with Tom. Thank you very much. And the people that we have, you know, stepping up today, with Ray stepping up for the acting chief and Colin as sergeant position, I think it's just a testament to our officers on the department willing to do what needs to be done and the growth and through their whole career and what comes out of our department here within North St. Paul. We have, you know, we've had many officers over the years that have been here, have retired from here. We've had officers that started here and went to other, other departments. And North St. Paul seemingly has always been a very, very strong effort for that, whether it's police or fire. We've had a lot of people go on to other, other larger career departments. So I think it's just, again, a testament to our programs that we offer here and the people that we have here. So thank you to all.
You don't have to stay for the meeting if you don't want. It's just something that, we'd love to have you stay, but. Tom, do you want your box? That's the May eighteenth, 2021 workshop minutes, the May eighteenth, 2021 regular meeting minutes, and the general claims of five hundred thirty-nine thousand nineteen dollars and eighty-four cents. Is there a motion to, or is there, anybody want to pull anything off the consent agenda?
Item C.
Item C. We'll move that down to item J. So we'll have the two, motion for the first two items. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by council member Cole.
Second.
Seconded by council member Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting open to the public. We like to extend people to come up and talk to the council, but we try to limit it in a three-minute of all. And I've got two people here. First one is RT. Welcome, RT.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm going to make this really brief today. Actually, we have practice tonight, and I got to get back. But I was able to listen to the closed session stuff, which is great. Obviously incorporated a lot of those thoughts and ideas into our proposal back to you guys regarding the potential lease of the building. But there were a couple of items that I did want to clear and put some things on the record, if I may, if I can submit these, so that they are public record. There were two items that came up that we were a little concerned about regarding kind of the not payment of rent. And I wanted to just put into the record all of our communications with the city regarding our rent. And then also regarding the unsigned lease, I have some communications about that as well, that we went back and forth with the city and just didn't hear back at the end regarding the kind of proposal that we had regarding that lease. So I just wanted these things to be in the public record, because I know it was talked about, and that meeting is now public. So I just wanted these communications to also be in there so they can hear and see how we did in fact communicate with the council or the city manager.
And we'll get those.
Regarding these.
Yep.
I appreciate that.
Perfect.
Just to kind of make sure everybody is open and transparent and that everybody has that information, so people aren't like, Kogoro's not doing what they're supposed to do. It's like, no, here's all the information that we have, so.
Got it.
But I appreciate the opportunity to listen to that stuff, and it was good to hear from you guys, and that's what we've kind of been asking for all along, like, hey, let's sit down, and we want to hear what you guys want from that space. And we were able to, like I said, incorporate some of that back in to our proposal back to you guys. We look forward to hearing from you again. We know, I talked to Attorney Matic, and he said it could be a little while. That's totally fine. We're not worried about it. Our next rent check is already in there. But I couldn't wait to do it because I'll be out of town. We have a national tournament here starting in about a week and a half.
Where are you going?
We'll be in Florida.
Perfect.
I'll be down in Florida for about two weeks, so I won't be back until July. I'll be down in Florida for about two weeks, so I won't be back until July. And I'd have to look at the next council meeting when it is in July. And I just wanted to get this stuff in so that it was a public record. So I appreciate you guys. Thank you for all the stuff you did send to us and the requests that we had. We were able to utilize that in a really good way, we thought. So thank you very much.
Good luck in Florida.
Thank you.
Is that for Junior Olympics?
It is, it is. The national championships are down there in Orlando and it should be, it should be fun. Things are loosening up a little bit. More spectators are going to be allowed. They're going to have unlimited spectators, but everybody's going to mask in the stands. And hopefully they'll work on that a little bit. But, so it looks like it'll be a pretty, pretty normal event, so we look forward to it, so. Thanks.
Good luck.
Thank you.
John Schmall. Welcome, John.
Mayor, council. I'm wondering if, does the city have a decibel level on noise that you would enforce?
So Friday night car show, motorcycles coming in, complaints on car noise. We do have, we do have it in place, but it's hard for the police to enforce it. It's a noise ordinance. It should be anywhere in the city.
So what does a citizen incur in trying to get somebody involved in cutting the noise down?
Call the police.
Lucky them for that.
That's who, that's who enforces it.
Okay, well, I was home this weekend and I could have told you, if you wanted to ask me, that you were going to have trouble at Casey in a mess, just based on the noise level. Now, who has the amp? Is that brought in by the individual?
It's complained by the citizens, so you would make.
The amp itself. Do we provide the amp or does the individual?
Individuals. We don't, we don't have an amplifier there.
Okay, well, somebody ought to be telling these people when they rent the place that we have a noise ordinance. We got signs on McKnight saying noise ordinance enforced. Maybe a sign at Casey, a couple of them that says noise ordinance enforced.
I'm assuming it could be in the, we should have it in the contract. If we don't have it, we should probably put that in there. It's always got to be enforced.
John, please, I just wanted to comment, as I mentioned in the workshop, this is something that we need to really take a comprehensive look at because, you know, the things I mentioned in the workshop and what John is mentioning right now, the problem is just escalating and we need to, we need to get it in control.
Yep.
So, but there was no doubt that the statement that the city manager made about a problem was going to happen based on just what was going on. I couldn't see it. I didn't know who was there. There's no way through the trees that I can see it. But the noise level was atrocious. And those poor people that have houses right by the parking lot, it's surprising they don't say something. Because I'm now a block away and it's boom, ba-ba-boom, ba-ba-boom, and the windows are rattling. So would appreciate it if somebody informs these individuals that we do have a noise ordinance. The other thing is, is that I also had the opportunity to listen to the double secret, double secret probation closed meeting minutes. I could only get through two of the four before I got bored. But anyway, the first one was dealing with that the community center can no longer be left and patched and that there is a need to repair it. So I was wondering when this is going to be an agenda item to repair the, I guess, the roof and the rooftop units and whatnot. Because according to the city manager in meeting number one on 221, that it's in bad shape and it cannot be left to be patched anymore. Something has to be done with it. And I was just curious as to when that's going to come up.
Well, I can't give you a specific date. I don't.
Well, I can tell you, as we know, one of the things that we've looked at or and have applied for as we've submitted the bonding request for the potential complete revamping and remodeling of the center. And so the outcome of that will be one of the guiding pieces because that would provide a complete rehab of the building, both inside and out. If that isn't successful, yes, we're going to have to come up with our own plans to do something. But the patchwork for the building has been done as recent as this spring to put that in place. But to not do things without the unknowing of what the outcome of the building is going to be long-term. And so we're not doing it twice.
Okay, well, I just found it interesting that you said, "We're in trouble. Patches aren't going to work anymore." So anyway, I always try to keep our assets in good shape.
Correct.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Just quick comment on his noise ordinance comments. So I know this has been a topic in the past, like Mayor alluded to, a lot of the car show. And the issue that we've had with that is that, you know, if a motorcycle or a loud car drives by, the timeframe from someone calling to the police, they're gone. And the rule is it needs to be a sustained decibel level. And from my understanding, the police department does have a tool that measures that. So in this case where it's, you know, it's happening at a fixed park facility and if it's ongoing, I mean, I would imagine anyone could call and complain. I believe they, they come and they park a certain distance away and they observe and they use their tool. And if it reaches that level, then they proceed with enforcement. And it's essentially, we've got noise complaints, you need to stop or bring it down. And if we come back again, we're going to shut your event down or your party if it happens at a house or whatever. And then you're going to be issued a citation. So I believe in that case, it is simply just a phone call to the police department. And if they have the resources, they can deal with it. But, you know, a car driving by is a loud motorcycle, it's a little harder to enforce. But these park facilities or homeowners that have parties at their home and there's noise issues, I believe we can have enforcement follow up on and deal with.
And it's been the issue that, you know, a noise ordinance or a noise complaint is that the officers will go there, they'll check in, they'll tell them to turn it down, do whatever. If it, just as you commented, if it continues to go back, to shut it down. Because the problems that we've had over the years with the, with the noise decibel meters and things like that, it becomes a, you know, if it does go to court, what's been the, what's been the certification? What's been the calibration of the device and all that stuff? And it's just, it's been a nightmare to try to utilize equipment like that to, to end up with a court process. So it's been much, much easier, much more effective to actually visit and say, hey, you've got complaints, turn it down, keep it in reason. And if that doesn't happen, to ask it to be shut down completely.
We've had problems with Newman's, we've had A&amp;J during, you know, the car show. It's just something that, yeah, it's hard to enforce, you know, it's. But, you know, Casey Lake, we should be able to go there and, you know, if it's a loud party, shut them down.
And, and I certainly don't want to, we, you know, we talked about this last year and we talked about it, I think, the year before. And we need to definitely have things in place this year for the fireworks. You know, last July was, was terrible event with that, with the mess that we had down there. And we've seen some of that this weekend in the, in the parking lot, just on a regular, on a regular picnic. So to control those, those things, you know, and whether it means regular routine courtesy visits from the police department into there. But it's a meeting we need to have soon and put together some, some procedures in place to, to manage this.
All right, is there anybody on Zoom for public input?
There's no answers.
No answers, okay. So at this time, we have no public hearings. City business and action items and recommendations, turn over to City Manager Dudek. We got to follow this new layout.
First item we have, Mayor, we have several of these this evening. And this is the issuance of our liquor license renewals. And the first one is a liquor license renewal for 3-2 on-sale liquor license. And we have, we have several of these, so if you want to, we'll go through them individually. But the first one is a liquor license renewal for 3-2 on-sale liquor license.
So we have, the first one is 3-2, and that's separate from the other one. So the motion is for resolution approving the 3.2 on-sale liquor license renewals effective July 1st through June 30th of 2022. Is there any questions for City Manager or City Attorney? Not, I'll listen.
I have a question. It's an overreaching question to all of these tonight. Are any of these that we're about to vote on tonight, any of these locations been nuisance locations? We had multiple police calls that we had.
No, we have not.
I didn't think we had, but I wanted to ask.
Yeah, no, none of these.
Does that typically go on the record when we see?
Oh, yeah. If there's issues that have been gone, going on, that's something would be definitely reviewed at licensing time and things like that. But thankfully, that is something that we, we do not have. And, you know, we also do the underage checks that are going on there with our tobacco and alcohol and things like that. So we've got that information, but these have all been very good, long-term businesses.
Is there a motion for the 3-2?
Just a follow-up comment. If there ever becomes an issue, we can address it. We don't have to wait for the renewal. So if there's an ongoing issue, we can always put that on the agenda and discuss it. And if revocation is, or suspension is, I mean, it's happened. We've just never had, to my knowledge, ever had any issues like that, but.
Is there a standard, like, protocol or procedure in, you know, which we would, like, would trigger a revocation or at least a conversation for it?
The police department is where these licenses originate out of, so they're, they're managing and tracking all the issues with that. So that would be a recommendation or something that would come forth out of the police department. And I will say this is the first time that these licenses have been processed and applied for through our new Open Gov system. And I can tell you that the police department was, has been extremely excited. They've also worked with our attorney's office to streamline a lot of the information in here and putting this together. A lot of the licensing in the past has been information that has been in place for just a number of years. So are, are working with our city attorney's office and the police department, updated this process and it has gone very well through the online portal.
And I heard from the businesses that they're extremely happy.
Yes.
That was my comment.
All right, is there a motion for the 3-2 license?
Some would.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. City Manager Dudek.
Your counsel, the next, the next item is for the liquor license renewal for city off-sale intoxicating liquor licenses. So that is your next one for your consideration.
I'm just looking at it here and the 3-2 was, do they have two? I'm looking at Pizza Factories on both of them, a 3-2 and a, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
I believe, I believe they have the, if I remember right, they had the $150. I'd have to go back and look at their application.
That was a wine.
Right.
But that's, so off-sale would be selling liquor that would go off-premise.
Let me see if. I don't have the.
City Attorney, I don't know if you.
Yeah, so on-sale is consumed on the premises, off-sale is exactly that.
Yes, and that's.
So bright wines, they sell and it goes off, but Pizza Factory doesn't sell.
Pizza Factory doesn't do that. I'm just trying to see their application back up that's not here. But, yeah, that may be an error because that is listed for off-sale.
Yeah, if they don't have a pending, there are always concerns about issuing an on-sale and an off-sale simultaneously.
Correct.
So I would say the motion just before the bright wines.
Exactly.
And check into that.
I'll look into that one.
Off-sale for Pizza Factory. I don't think it should be there.
Yep, I think that's an error on the off-sale.
So the motion is for off-sale intoxicating for bright wines. Is there a motion for, for their license? Moved by Councilmember Peterson. Seconded by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? Councilmember Thorson.
Just trying to rack my brain here. And I know some of these liquor stores have left, but I know Target, they have an off-sale. Is that, why are they not on this list?
Good question.
I don't know, I don't know the extent of who applied, to be honest. But, but to sell, they need a off-sale license. I just don't know the, when their renewal date is.
Right, and these are all the.
I think Target's the only other one that's off-sale.
Correct, and these licenses expire June 30th. So we would, I will follow up with both of those from the police department on the Pizza Factory and also Target.
Because there used to be, there was a Nine Dragons and that was in the Polar Plaza, but they're no longer there. And then there was a McKnight liquor that was in the.
Yep.
They're no longer there either. And I don't believe there is another traditional drive-up liquor.
Did not apply this year. They're not going to be selling down there. Was that Polar Charity?
Yeah.
Oh, correct.
Charities are normally at, operating out of, but they get a 3-2 license too, so I just assumed that they weren't on there, but.
But no, Target, Target should definitely be, would be in here. And then also Pizza Factory for the off-sale, so I'll look into that.
Pizza Factory not.
No, they should not be on the off-sale.
Not be on there, right.
So, and then did Target, because they recently, that was a relatively new.
Yeah, build-out.
I mean, is it just a mistake that, you know, perhaps they weren't understanding that we do our renewals this time of year? Effective Janu-, because they're effective July 1st, correct?
Just depends if they get their, if we sent paperwork for them to renew the license.
Everybody would have been notified of this new process.
We know when their licenses are.
Right. I'll follow up with both of those with the police department.
Councilmember Wong, you were.
Yeah, I had a question in regards to off-sale licensing. So theoretically, if we had like a brewery where people are drinking in-house and then also say they have a growler or something and people, you know, take it off-sale, then would it, then it's appropriate to have both or not?
It's a different license.
It's a different license. But they can apply for both.
Yep. There are different licenses for the breweries and the onsite brewing and take the growler off. And it's a very complicated system, candidly, more than it needs to be.
I concur.
Thank you.
Too complicated.
And I do think one point of clarification on Target, Councilmember Thorson. There was, I believe they have made an application, but I believe there was a question about the way they had submitted their insurance. So there is, we are looking into that.
Oh, okay. Well, I'd just hate to see, you know, all that build-out. And I know there's obviously a lot of people that go there. You know, if it's just some little technical thing, I think we can work with them and not send the police there on July 1st and tell them to shut the door. We don't.
Well, we'll have the next council meeting to be able to act on it yet before their expiration of their license.
The motion is for the off-sale intoxicating liquor license for bright wines. And I think we have the motions. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And I think the other ones we can do as a group, and that would be for the on-sale.
Correct, the other one is on-sale. With basically all of our establishments in the, in the downtown area.
Page 47, looks like.
Yep. Kind of realized Newman's was a speakeasy.
Yeah. Where have you been?
So the motion is for the on-sale intoxicating liquor licenses for Newman's, for Ra- for Rides, for the Polar, for the American Legion, for Sidewinders, and for the Legion.
VFW.
V, oh, I'm sorry, VFW.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by council member Peterson.
Second.
Second by council member Thorson. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
And again, I'll follow up on those, those couple, and it sounds like with our city attorney also on that, but to make sure that Target, where they're at, and the correction with Pizza Factory. Next item we have here under is the Shoreland setback variance for 2612 Swan Avenue. And we've got Eric Swaber with WSB with us this evening to present this. Eric is on Zoom.
Welcome, Eric, if you're out there.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Eric Swaber. Looks like I do not have the ability to share my presentation on the screen, but I will run through it verbally. So the request is for Shoreland variance to construct a screen porch on an existing deck. The property is located at, excuse me, 2612 Swan Avenue East. The existing condition is that the existing setback for this property is seventy-five feet from the ordinary high-wire level mark. They are requesting a variance to make a new setback of fifty-seven feet to construct a porch over the existing deck. The variance review requires five evaluations. The first is, is the variance in harmony and consistent with the general purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan and its chapter? This is property guided for low-density residential. The proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The second standard is the variance will not adversely affect the health, safety, or welfare of the city. The screen porch will not affect health, sa-
We lost him.
But, no, I got promoted as a panelist, so now I can share my screen.
Eric, we lost you for a little bit there, so.
Sorry. I'll go back to the beginning and just be quick.
Sure.
So again, this is 2612 Swan Avenue East. The request is for an ordinary high-wire level mark setback variance. There is an existing deck on the site that is, the applicant is proposing to enclose into a screen porch. The existing setback requirement is seventy-five feet, and they are requesting a new setback through this variance of fifty-seven feet to enclose the porch. There are five standards required for variance. First is that it's consistent with comprehensive plan. Single-family house with a porch is consistent with the low-density residential land use designation. Second is the variance will not adversely affect the health, safety, or general welfare of the city. The screen porch will not impact those, those factors. The third is the one we have the most discussion about with the planning commission, and it is that the variance is necessary due to special circumstances applying to this structure or land in question, and does not generally apply to other land or structures in the district or in the vicinity in which the land is located. So in the Shoreland ordinance, there are two standards for setbacks. First being seventy-five feet, and the second is, or the average of two homes that are adjacent to the subject property. The average setback for the two homes adjacent to this property is eighty-seven-point-five feet. So seventy-five feet would apply. But looking at properties, as you look to the southwest, you can see that those properties get a lot closer to the shoreline. So if this was the property at 2592 Swan Avenue, the average between the two houses would be forty-five feet, and that would be the setback for that property. So the variance of fifty-seven feet is unique to this property. The fourth standard is that this is the minimum variance necessary to alleviate practical difficulty. The deck exists today. They did reconstruct it with new footings to make sure that it would withstand the new roof. That, when they did that, they hit a rock and actually needed to move the footings one foot to avoid those rocks. Therefore, this fifty-seven-foot variance request is the minimum necessary. And then finally, there's a set of standards about whether it meets the practical difficulties test. First, the property one proposes the use that is a reasonable manner. Second, that the plight of the landowners due to circumstances unique to the property. Third is the variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of locality. Fourth, economic conditions alone do not constitute practical difficulties. And five, the variance is consistent with the officially adopted city plans overlays. So enclosing a deck is a use that would be reasonable in the R1 zoning district. The plight is not due to the landowner. As we talked about, the, depending on which lot you were, you may have a lesser setback than what is on this property. Won't alter the essential character. They're not doing it for economic reasons, and it is consistent with city plans. So we did get a comment from the area hydrologist, and he said he would not, he does not plan on commenting on this application. Here is a plan showing how that screen porch would look. And then finally, on May 6th, the planning commission conducted a public hearing, and they actually recommended approval on a three-two vote. So I came forward to the city council with the recommendation of approval that the principal structure shall not be located closer than fifty-seven feet from the ordinary high-wire level mark. So with that, I would stand for any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Eric? Council member Thorson.
Just a, we're watching your PowerPoint presentation, and some of the information we have in our packet, but there are other pages that weren't. Is there, like that, you flashed that comment about there was a resident feedback that's not in our packet? And then I'm just curious as to why, why that's not in our packet? But that's more of a, I could think, our deal?
Council member Thorson, that's, that's my error. I apologize. We got that email from the DNR area hydrologist. That was my error not to put her in the packet.
You're talking about adjacent properties. What, is that defined in our, in our code about what's adjacent? Because you said that the two adjacent, I'm assuming it's the next-door neighbors, but then you said you looked further down and moved it from the eighty, was it eighty-seven and a half feet to forty-five feet?
So there's, there's two standards that one has the language adjacent, one has the language vicinity. So the setback is seventy-five feet or the average of the adjacent properties, which would be the two properties that touch this particular lot. Now, when we look at a variance, we see, is this unique to the property compared to the other properties in the district or in the vicinity? So the setback standard that they're requesting for the variance states adjacent, the two properties adjacent to it. But when looking at, is this property being treated equally, we look at other properties within the vicinity. So hopefully that helps to.
Yeah, that, yeah, that does. And my last que, and I guess the other, those pictures that you had up, that also wasn't in the packet. But am I, is it my understanding that there was an existing deck there? And that this new enclosure is going to be right where that was, essentially?
Correct. Let me, let me go back.
There was already a structure there. It was a deck, but now they're going to construct an enclosed, yeah, we've flown by.
So the area in red here, that's an existing deck.
And then that's where this Four Seasons porch, or whatever it's being referred to as, is going to go. It's going to be the same footprint as the deck.
With the one exception that they, they improved the deck recently, and they were allowed to do that because the deck doesn't have to meet the Shoreland setback. When they, when they went and looked at the footings for the replacement deck, they needed to move the footings one foot closer to the lake.
And that was my last question, because I heard you say they started construction on this. And it was a little concern that, well, why are they starting construction if they are, if they need a variance? But that's, the, the, the previous construction was work on the existing deck.
Council member Thorson, that's correct. There are essentially two exceptions from the Shoreland setback. One is for a deck, and one is for a small water accessory structure. So we were able to issue them a building permit for the deck without the request for a variance. They just wanted to get ahead of that work. And if this variance isn't granted, that's where they'll stop with the deck. But they wanted to make sure the deck was of sufficient integrity to put the screen porch on.
And so the reason for the variance request is because this is a different type, you know, a deck doesn't require it, but because this is considered something else, that's what is requiring, okay. Well, I guess my personal opinion is that, you know, this is their property. I know we have rules of variances and things, and we've had, I believe the last variance discussion was about a resident who just wanted to add a garage to his structure, and that initially got shot down. But, you know, I struggle with why, you know, a situation like this, or a homeowner is essentially adding on to their deck, needs a variance request. I think it's unnecessary, but that's the way our code's written. And I'm glad to hear that the planning commission has gone through and vetted this, and if they're recommending approval, I certainly support that.
Any other questions for Eric? Councilman Wong, I know you were at the meeting.
Oh, I think I, I.
You heard enough?
I heard the process and understand it, so, yeah. Have any questions, but I believe that the statement from the DNR and the hydrologist is on page fifty-nine about whether they would not comment. So it is in the public hearing section of the information provided in our packet.
Any questions, concerns? Okay, motion, motion to approve the resolution approving a variance for a Shoreland setback of fifty-seven feet to allow the construction of a screen porch at 2612 Swan Avenue East. Is there a, moved by council member Peterson?
Second.
Second by council member Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Anderson, you can put up your.
When's the party? We'll be over.
Good, good. You can invite us all over then. City manager, DuDeck.
Mayor, council, thank you. The next item we have is a level-two home occupation intermuse permit for Bradley Plumbing at 2081 Park Row, and Eric Swaber will handle that presentation also.
Thank you, city manager. Thank you, city council and mayor. As Mr. DuDeck introduced, this is an interim use permit for a level-two home occupation at 2081 Park Row. This is an image of, of the property. What we're addressing here is simply the, the business that he operates out of his house, and most specifically, the truck that is parked within his driveway. This interim use permit, should it be approved, will only address the business and the van or the truck. Any other code violations will need to be addressed through code enforcement. This interim use permit does not grant him relief or a variance from any, any other potential code violation. So we're dealing strictly with the business and, and the van. This is some images of the driveway in the van in question. Mr. Bradley stated that he's been operating his business for thirty-seven years. I'm going to go pretty quickly through these. It just happens to be, there's a lot of standards that go through level-two home occupation and the interim use permit that would allow him to park that van. But you can see here that a level-two business in item six specifically states heating, plumbing, or air conditioning service. He is running a plumbing business. Second is the standards that all home occupations will need to follow. Again, I won't read all nine of these, but in addition to the conditions of the interim use permit, all these standards will need to be followed by Mr. Bradley. And he stated that he should be able to meet these, the business activities that happen at this residence are bookkeeping, invoicing, scheduling, and the like. No commercial plumbing is occurring at his property. For the interim use permit review, there are also a number of standards that happen to be fairly similar to the variance standards. But first, that this is consistent with the general purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan. This property is a low-density residential, and level-two home occupations are allowed with an interim use permit in low-density residential. Second, the use will not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare. Again, we're just talking about the truck, which will need to be parked in the driveway and in compliance with all the city code requirements for parking. Third is that the use is compatible with the present and future land uses. This is a low-density residential and zone R1, which allows home occupations. When we talk about the conditions of the interim use permit, when the business is sold, or when Mr. Bradley moves from this property, that interim use permit will expire. The fourth is that the use and appearance of the use is compatible with the adjacent properties. Again, we're just simply talking about the truck. Any other code violations will be enforced. They are not, this interim use permit is not granting any other exceptions to the code. The fifth is that the use can be adequately supported by urban services. This will not, the truck itself will not add any impacts to urban services. And then the sixth is that the use will not create an excessive burden on existing park schools or other public facilities. And again, the van or the truck will not put any additional burden on park schools or other public facilities. Seven, the use is sufficiently compatible and separated by distance from the residentially-zoned use. Again, the truck can only be driveway. Seven, or sorry, eighth is the use is in harmony and purposes of the chapter and zoning districts. A level-two home occupation is allowed in this zoning district. Ninth, the use does not create an intrusion of excess odor, glare, or generally unsightfulness. The truck does not create an excessive amount of those issues. Tenth is, will not impose by agreement any additional costs to the public. The truck will not create any additional costs. Eleventh, will terminate upon a tangible date. Again, we're asking that it expire when either of two conditions happen. Mr. Bradley sells his business or Mr. Bradley sells this house. And then finally, twelve, if applicable, the proposed use is consistent with the officially adopted plans and overruns. As we discussed, a level-two home permit is allowed. The truck is not a six-ton vehicle and it will need to be parked. Today it says it cannot extend into the alley or street right of way. But the next item on the agenda is some amendments to the zoning ordinance. And should those be approved, the new parking standards would be that the vehicle would need to be parked ten feet behind the curb line. Finally, the planning commission held a public hearing on the May sixth regular meeting and they unanimously recommended approval of the IUP. So again, the resolution for you has two conditions of approval that be, well, one condition with two subparts. The interim use permit will expire when either of the following events occur. If Bradley, excuse me, Gregory Bradley sells or closes the Bradley Plumbing business or if Gregory Bradley sells the single-family residence at twenty-eighty-one Park Row. With that, I stand for any questions that the city council may have.
Any questions for Eric? Councilmember Peterson.
I lived up in that area and any, every time I go out to National Night Out, the neighbors go crazy about his business practices and all this stuff. I know we're just talking about the truck. But I'm hoping he can, you know, comply. I mean, I'm not saying that he can't. But I'm hoping the city, Scott, will be monitoring it because it's, it's been a problem. It's, it's unsightly and if I had to live next to it or across the street from it, I wouldn't be happy. Things haven't been any, excuse me, any better.
Take your time, take your time.
I'm just trying to protect the neighborhood. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Thorson.
So, and I understand we're not, we're not discussing any potential code enforcement issues, but is the reason that this raises to a level of home occupancy is just because of the size of the truck? And I, is that?
Councilmember Thorson, it's both the size of the truck and that it's a plumbing business. We, we have a list of what would be a level-one home occupation and then a list of other businesses that have more of an impact that are level-two. And heating, plumbing businesses fall into that level-two category. So that's why it's an interim use permit instead of simply administrative permit if it was a level-one home occupation.
I'm kind of racking my brain here to try to remember what, you know, these, we've had these past discussions. There was the Tony Eden deal that went on for a long time. And there seemed to be some confusion that what constitutes a home occupancy and not, and that, you know, if you're running a small engine repair business out of your garage, you're physically there working. That's an obvious example, but if you're, if you work for a small engine repair business like Carpenter's in town and you drive a box truck similar to, to Mr. Bradley's and you, you, you just are parking it in your home, that's not a home occupancy. You're just driving a vehicle that, that happens to be your line of work, but you're not operating a business out of your home. But I guess I'd have to go back and I'm not going to take up time. I'll have to go back on my own and refresh my memory on this stuff. But I thought that we already kind of went through all this already and kind of adopted some changes about what constitutes home occupation and then what, you know, as far as trailers and truck sizes and whatnot, but I'm just, I guess I'm just a little confused at why the fact that he just parks his vehicle there, that, that automatically means that he's a, it's a home occupancy.
What, what triggered for him to, to do this? I guess he's been there, that truck's been there forever.
Yeah, and, and mayor, I'm not sure what, what triggered this to come forward with this. I can tell you that there has been many ongoing code compliance issues and even in the recent, recent past. And I'm, I guess I'm unsure that this evening if all of those have been corrected. But I know our code compliance had been working with the property just in the recent past on, on issues there. And so what, what brought this forth right now, this would be to my knowledge, this is our only other permit that we have in the city as the previous one that we had, had been eliminated. And as you know, we have many of these different vehicles around, around the city. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure if this was brought forward because of some of the other code compliance issues that were going on and this was, this was part of that that brought forward to get this, at least this part of it rectified. Eric, I don't know if you have any of that background?
Yeah, yes, thank you, Mr. Dudek. Yes, it's my understanding that it was through communications with the code compliance individuals that they requested that he apply for this home occupation. The other thing I would state is I think Councilmember Thorson's analogy, you know, falls that if you worked at a different location and you just brought a truck home, that might save that business. That wouldn't be home occupation. In this case, Mr. Bradley states that he doesn't have an office in some other location. So his business address is this house. And so it's, it's not that he has an office or a contractor's yard somewhere else and just brings his truck home. He operates the business out of his home and that's what warranted the home occupation interim use permit.
Yeah, and that's just where I guess I'm not necessarily in agreement with that because it, you know, if, if he's, you know, if my toilet backs up and I call him, he doesn't come and take my toilet and bring it to his house and fix it. All of his work is not at his house physically. If I'm understanding that correctly, he's just, he parks his vehicle there and he's obviously self-employed and doesn't have an office, so. And I'd imagine that this came up out because of, there must have been some complaints. But I just, I don't understand what is violating any ordinances by saying, oh, you have a van parked in your yard? You can't do that because it's labeled up as commercial. I mean, I thought we already kind of went over all that stuff when we were dealing with the Tony Eden situation and, but.
The only other piece that I can think of that in looking at the pictures here was also the assurance that the vehicle is parked on the, on the pavement or on the parking lot or on the driveway, I should say. Here, I think in one of those pictures that you seen there, it was spread across the front yard. And so that might have been some of the other things that brought this forth with code, code compliance.
Yeah, there was, there was a picture that Eric put up that was not in our packet. That was a winter scene that showed three vehicles across that, without seeing what was actually underneath the snow. It appeared to me, right, as a, as a potential for a code issue at, at the time. And I guess I have concern granting the, hearing some of the concerns of council. I have concerns knowing that he's had code issues in the past and that basically what we're granting him is the opportunity to park there until he either moves or sells his business. I guess my recommendations would, I'd like this to be time-bound or, or reviewed. In the event that additional code violations do pop up, what grounds do we have to rescind his ability to park, park his vehicle there?
And the only, the comment I would make is, you know, is reference this evening that this was looked at as specifically for the vehicle parking and, and this home occupation. And none of the other code issues were looked at at this point. And I could, you know, with that said, could come back and get a report from our code compliance on the, on the status of those issues, if those have all been remedied or are there still open issues with that to, to Councilmember Peterson's point?
We do have a lot, we do have code violations there, I'm assuming.
And I'm not sure if they've been corrected at this point or not, if they're still outstanding. But I do know there, there had been in the recent past.
We can certainly, you know, the application has been made. There's been some concerns expressed about the condition of the property, making sure we have some conditions. You know, if what we want to do is lay this over for your, till your next meeting so we can get a better picture of what's out there right now, what it looks like and perhaps craft some additional conditions on what might trigger a review or revocation. Right now you've got in this proposed permit that, you know, if he sells the property or closes the business, the, the permit goes away. We could take a look if there's other conditions to help incentivize the cleaning up and the general appearance of the property.
In addition, I can get, you know, code compliance reports and also have our chief, our fire chief here too, to discuss and give an update on, on the status of the property, if things are open or, or what the status of that is.
Do you want a table? Motion, motion to table?
I'll make that motion.
Motion to table, Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cole.
It's table till your next meeting, the date certain, which is fifteenth?
Table to the next meeting, which is fifteenth, yep, fourteenth is Monday, my birthday. Just let you know. All those in favor signify, or do you even vote on it? You do vote on, okay. Motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Table that.
Mayor Council, our next one again is Eric will also present this. This is a zoning code text amendments to implement the twenty-forty comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Mr. Dudek and city council and mayor. The planning commission has been working quite diligently on this for a little over a year. The comprehensive plan was adopted back in December of two thousand nineteen. The zoning ordinance is required to be amended to comply with the comprehensive plan's goals and policies. And that update process began in July of two thousand twenty. The proposal before you has twenty, or excuse me, has six sections. One of them includes an update to the traffic code regarding truck parking restrictions. The other five are sections three definitions, section six residential districts, section seven mixed-use districts, and section eight overlay districts. And then finally, section ten general regulations. And I'll go into an overview of those individual sections next. Currently, the title of this section is truck parking restrictions. What we're proposing to do is change the title to restrictions on certain vehicles and addresses restrictions of parking commercial vehicles within residential districts. So for the portions of the zoning code that are amended, there's quite a few changes to the definitions section. This includes adding forty-one new definitions and amending twenty-five existing definitions. The amendment addresses three general topics. One, to better describe the uses regulated within the ordinance. Two, to address topics added to the ordinance through the proposed other sections of this amendment. Or to update changes in state statutes or rules. Regarding residential districts, we've revised the three tables that describe uses and lot requirements. So for table three, which is the residential use districts, we are actually adding a cottage development, a development that would allow a smaller type of single-family home, address a number of accessory uses and combine the residential and mixed-use tables into one common table. Table four, which is currently the residential district lot requirements, we are reducing the minimum lot sizes for R1 and R2 to implement the densities within the twenty-forty comprehensive plan. And second, reducing the lot width requirements that would allow these new lot areas. The third change is table five, which is the residential design district requirements, which increases the maximum densities within the R1 and R2 and add a minimum livable floor space requirement for two-family and townhome uses. For the mixed-use districts, we're revising two of those tables. First, table six, mixed-use districts uses, we're moving that into table three. So table six will disappear. And there were a number of amendments to uses that are permitted or conditional. This is the largest part that required the changes to the definition sections. There were some uses that didn't have definitions and there are some things that we're modifying that we wanted to modify the definition as well. The second change to the mixed-use district is those mixed-use district lot requirements. We are adding a minimum lot area per dwelling unit. These are mixed uses. So we're addressing essentially the residential density within the mixed-use districts. And we're increasing the lot size of the MU one district from zero square feet to one square feet. For overlay districts, we are amending three of the overlay districts. The first is the downtown overlay district where we are prohibiting downtown, or excuse me, prohibiting townhouses within the MU one zoning district. So to clarify, the MU one district is not completely within the overlay district. There are areas of town that are MU one zoning, but not downtown overlay. Those areas would be allowed to have townhomes. If it is MU one within the downtown overlay, townhomes would not be allowed. The intent is to have more density than, than townhomes. Second, shoreline district, we are doing a couple of things. Currently, there is not a minimum lot width. We're going to add that. We are adding a minimum lot area of one, of a one-unit building to be consistent with the R1 zoning district. And when we look at units that have two to four units per building, that would be consistent with the R2. There originally, when we posted for the public hearing, we were having all of the units be consistent with the R2. The area hydrologists expressed concerns that that could create too much impervious surface. So that's, we've since changed that single-family use to be consistent with the existing R1. Again, when I talked about the tables, we're reducing the lot width in the R1 and R2 as well as the lot area. We wanted to keep the shoreline overlay what the rules are today, essentially. And the third is planned unit development. There's quite a few changes here, including clarifying the purpose and objectives of the district, which is important when evaluating what is suitable for a PUD and what should be straight zoning. The second is clarify the types of eligible. Third is to clarify other sections of the zoning ordinance that can be deviated from the PUD standards, such as lot width, densities, the like. Fourth bullet is implement parking standards. Fifth, add a concept PUD process, so kind of a low-level opportunity for the developer and the planning commission to review the proposal before they come with the full set of plans. Sixth would be encourage a neighborhood meeting before the public hearing. Seventh is update the preliminary and final PUD process. Eighth is update the smidler requirements for a PUD. And finally, update the PUD amendment and revocation process. Regarding the general regulations, we have five subsections that we're addressing over each of those as follows. First, for usable open space, we change the townhome requirement to requiring twenty-five percent of the lot area be usable open space. percent of the lot area be usable open space, and we're adding a requirement that open space within the cottage development, which is a new use proposed within zoning ordinance. For supplemental regulations, we are adding additional clarity to the accessory dwelling units, including prohibiting an ADU on a lot that currently has a duplex. So the intent is to only have two units per lot. We wanted to make sure that with the duplex, they couldn't apply for their unit. Clarified the lot width for a lot with an ADU, provide minimum and maximum floor areas for that ADU, allow specific locations for the ADU, and to allow a type-one home occupation, but prohibit a type-two home occupation within ADU. Number two, special infill housing, add a minimum floor area. For number three, townhomes, we are eliminating the current regulation regarding transformers and clarifying that the density needs to comply with the comprehensive plan. Number four is this new cottage development, which includes a density of minimum lot area requirements, heightened roof pitch requirements, lot coverage and floor area requirements, setback requirements, open space, parking locations, and porch regulations. And then finally, for two-family dwellings, limit the location of two-family dwellings from each other, and clarify the minimum width of a common wall between the two-family dwellings. Regarding architectural requirements, remove the maximum number of connected units. Second is have a minimum number of design features. Third is regulate the location of garages for townhomes. Fourth is adding comparable design standards, and then finally, garages, where garages are located for two-family dwellings. For landscape and screening, we're prohibiting trees from being placed in the, being planted within drainage utilitiesments, and then a number of changes for off-street parking and loading requirements, noting that the new commercial vehicles requirements in Section seventy-two oh four also apply, allowing the city engineer to determine the parking space dimensions for commercial vehicles, eliminating truck and bus parking, because that is located within Section seventy-two point oh four. Create a cable outlining parking locations, numbers, and time limits, clarifying where driveways are allowed and how the parking within the driveway is regulated. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on April first and then tabled this review until their meeting on May sixth. During the public hearing, the majority of the issues that were discussed happened to be the Shoreland District, what is the appropriate standard there, and then a lot of them had to do with parking regulations. One of the big topics was there are two different sizes of recreational vehicles, and at the version for the April first, both sizes of recreational vehicles were not allowed to be parked more than seventy-two hours in a driveway. We changed that because the smaller of the two-size vehicles should be able to meet the proposed driveway parking requirement of being ten feet from the property line in addition to the twenty-five-foot front yard setback. So if you have a vehicle under, I believe it's thirty feet in length, you would be able to park that in your driveway without a time limit, where a vehicle larger than that would only be there at most seventy-two hours. So with those changes, the Commission unanimously recommended approval of the zoning code text amendment ordinance, and then we have this lengthy title of the ordinance that I summarized in the beginning, but that is the ordinance that is recommended to be approved tonight. With that, I stand for any questions.
Any questions for Eric?
There's a whole lot of moving parts. I, I'll be honest, I'm not comfortable saying yea or nay with all of the changes and not completely understanding everything that took place. I did read through a lot of it and had questions. I had questions concerning around parking. I believe I have a thirty-foot setback from my garage to the curb. I have a vehicle that I drive, a pickup, that is twenty feet long. If I don't park that against my garage door, I am now within the ten feet of the curb, and I am now in violation. I know there are other shorter driveways. I may have misunderstood, I may have completely misunderstood what I read, but a lot of this is the first time that I had seen it or read it. I, the changing of lot sizes, you know, rezoning where townhouses can and cannot be constructed, I, there's just a lot there for me to absorb. So if I'm a one-person island, that's fine. My recommendations are that we table this and move this to a workshop, so that we can have greater dialogue, and this might be the only topic of that workshop, so that I can get a better understanding. But again, if I'm, if I'm the only one, so be it.
Motion to table it? Is there?
I'll second.
Second.
With direction to, do you want it to go to a workshop or study session date? I don't know what your upcoming session.
I'd say the workshop.
Is there?
Sooner the better.
Yeah, I was going to say, is there any timeline as far as now that this has been implemented, as far as completing it, or laying it over too long, or anything like that?
Well, Eric, remind me, this was city-initiated, not by an application, correct?
City attorney, that's correct, so we don't have the hundred-and-twenty-day time clock.
That's what I was getting at.
So we got time, plenty of time?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, for sure.
Okay.
We can, we can get it on a schedule for a workshop to discuss just this, because I would agree, there's lots of issues, and the issue that Councilman brings up about the driveway issue, you know, that's a, we, we've had issues where vehicles are parked out to the curb line and things like that, but just with our community, with the off-street parking requirements in the wintertime, just to make sure that we fully understand what that means, and then the enforcement, if this is adopted.
Okay. Mayor, could I ask, I think what Councilmember Cole said about the driveway is very informative. I think the intention is this is better than the current case, but I'll put together an exhibit that shows kind of the difference between the existing ordinance, what's proposed. I guess I'd ask, does any other council member have any specific items that I can make sure I bring forward in example? Otherwise, you know, between now and the work session, you can communicate through Mr. Dudek, and I'll make sure to bring those examples forward. Thank you.
Well, the one thing I, that came to mind, and I don't know if I'm reading it right either, is if your camper was to be picked up the night before, and you bring it to your house, and it doesn't fit in your driveway, you're putting it on the street, is that a two-hour time limit, or is that a seventy-two-hour time limit, that you can park it on the street?
The intention was seventy-two hours, but I'll make sure that we have it, you know, represented correctly in the proposed amendment.
Oh, the intent was seventy-two hours, not two hours?
Yes.
Okay. I read it wrong, then. We have a motion to table, unless there's somebody, something else?
No, I'll second.
We already had a first and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, okay. Motion carries.
And by doing so, I don't want to discount all the hard work, energy, effort that's gone into all of this. This has been over, from what I understand, over a year-long project, so it's not, it's, you know, tenure, tenure on the council, a lot of, a lot of conversation took place before I arrived, and it was just, as I was reading through this, it was just a whole lot to absorb in one sitting on a Sunday morning.
Really noted. Okay. Councilmember, or Councilmember, City Manager Dudek.
Mayor Council, thank you. The next item that we have is the flood hazard mitigation grant assistance to the City of North St. Paul via the DNR. This has to do with our application for 2483 Second Avenue that we've, we've been discussing for some time. I did submit the application back a few weeks ago, and basically, this was a response now back from the DNR requesting a resolution to be approved by the, by the council, along with documentation showing that funding is available in our city funds. So along with that would be an accounting attachment from our Surface Water Utility Fund to support that those funds are available internally. You can see in the, the grant submittal that I had submitted, basically had a $300,000 budget for this project. The maximum grant funding through the DNR is $120,000, which leaves $180,000 funding from the city, should this move forward. I can tell you that this, this grant application, for all intents and purposes, I believe is, will be issued. This is just the final process in submitting now the, the resolution and the supporting documents. By doing so, we're not committing to the grant. They would hold this in our, in our name for us to now then to go the next step with negotiating with the property owner, and, and then it's ultimately the council's decision if we move, move forward with this. So by your approving the resolution this evening, it does not lock us into having to move forward with the project as a whole. It just finalizes the grant application with the DNR. In the grant application, you can see the information that was provided. Basically, the budget that was used to put this together was a $250,000. These are all just budget numbers, but $250,000 to acquire the property, $10,000 for asbestos mitigation, $25,000 for demolition costs, grading $10,000 in restoration of the, of the habitat at $5,000, with a total of $300,000 cost. Now, those are all costs to be, you know, negotiated and finalized, but that's the budget that was submitted with this grant.
And what timeframe do we have? You're saying it's kind of open-ended, but I'm assuming we have some sort of deadline?
Yeah, in talking with the DNR, they will be very flexible with us on negotiating this, if we, the council decides to go ahead with this. It could be as, as long as going through the end of the year to try to put something together, so that the DNR is extremely flexible with this, with this grant opportunity.
I guess one of the questions I have is the, for their approval, was it based on being a floodplain, or is it based on just our recommendation, or how does, how does that work?
I didn't get any feedback on, on the approval process, other than, you know, it submitted the grant application, and then they responded back here now, last week, with the request for this resolution and the supporting documents of the funds available.
Any questions for City Manager? Councilmember Thorson?
Well, I was included in that email with the initial question with this, what was the contact person's name?
Pat.
Pat. And it seemed like his initial, well, in the email, and I have it in front of you, but he said, "This seems like an excellent candidate for our program." And, you know, when we had earlier discussion, we didn't have these pictures to reference, just, you know, this discussion that, yeah, there's flooding, and, you know, on page 150, you can see the look, looking out into the street from his driveway. I mean, you'd think you're standing in the middle of a lake there. And, you know, this is something that's happened several times to varying degrees. I think this was that back in that substantial rainfall back in 2011.
Yeah.
It's at seven, five-eleven. I mean, clearly, there's issues there in this, this area. I mean, this stuff doesn't happen, it's not like it happens prevalently all over town. And, and I think that this certainly serves a public purpose to pursue this, and hopefully we can, you know, reach a reasonable arrangement with the homeowner. I guess I'm a little concerned about, you know, we've got some numbers here of how does that impact negotiating? But I think, I think, you know, we can reach a reasonable agreement, and hopefully that can be done soon, and then we can bring that forward to the council for consideration. So I don't see any reason why we wouldn't approve this, just so the DNR can process the application.
And the other piece, just so council aware, if, you know, if we move ahead with this, just want to remind you that this, this property would then need to be kept in open space into, into perpetuity with this grant acceptance with the DNR.
You know, I've, I've seen pictures of other residential properties, and one is backyards of, I don't know where it is, but same timeframe, the whole backyards were underwater as a lake. I mean, it was terrible that people were sending me this. So your point, you say, you know, I think there are other areas within the city that this does happen, and this was one, this is the same time my basement flooded, which has never flooded before, and I think this was a very unusual circumstance that this happened, but it has happened, you know, in the, since then, it's, it's happened, but not as much. And then we also did the work behind there now with some sort of ponding area. But, Councilmember Wong.
Yeah, I'm curious on if the neighboring homes have similar issues, and whether this is, I mean, we see maps of the manholes and the catch basins and stuff on here, but are neighboring properties having the same experience, because then it must be a systemic issue that doesn't necessarily impact one house, but may impact several others.
Speak to that. There's two houses kitty-corner from the house that we're talking about, and they, they flood out. They're right on the corner there, I don't know what the one street is, the second, and the cross street. It's Anderson House and the mayor's house. And they've had issues, not as bad as the other one, but there has been some issues.
One of, one of the big issues with this is the elevation of the house that the house was constructed at. The low openings are lower than any other house in the area, so there's a, the neighboring house to this property to the west was recently sold last year and renovated, and has been reoccupied. That's a Rambler home just to the west, and then there'd be another home just to the east of this property. But this one here is the one that has received the, the major flooding on those occasions, and again, it has a lot to do with the low openings of the construction level.
And to the home to the east, was that renovation some sort of grading, or the homeowner decided to do something?
Yeah, the home to the east, I don't believe there was really much of any work there. There was the home to the west that was sold last summer, and it was, it was renovated and resold.
And as, as the mayor mentioned, there was a, with the ponding area that was created with the street project, there was directly at the rear of this property, in the, in the alleyway, the unapproved alley, there was a storm sewer installed and a catch basin installed back there, so there, there potentially will be the opportunity to grade, regrade this lot, to also use that as another overflow outlet. And again, remember that a lot of this will, I mean, it's going to take long into the future to, to try to remedy some of these problems, but this, this street flooding occurs when our, our storm sewer system becomes completely overtaxed, and, you know, it's a, it's a chain of events. Up, up behind Cowan School, there's, there's three different ponding areas there that was designed to slow the flow of the surface water coming down through this area. And so if you have a rain event today, and those ponds are at a low level, there, there are no issues. But if you have a sustained multiple events of rains, and now those ponds are all at their full capacity, and then you get another heavy storm coming through, there's no, there's no capacity to hold any of that back. All that water is flowing through immediately, and then it's surcharging the system, and this is the low area where it, where it vents out of the, out of the catch basin there and causes the area street flooding and that.
and causes the area, street flooding in that.
So aside from this particular site, are there other opportunities? Or is there a volume of expected, you know, water mitigated to this basin to help the whole system? Sorry, does that make sense?
Well, again, it's, it's, it's the, it's the long-term reconstruction of all of our infrastructure, because it's not just, you know, replace a section of pipe in this block section. It has to be something that has to be constructed throughout the, throughout the system. And, and just with all the changes over the time with, you know, different rain gardens and water ponding and retaining your water on-site for developments. I mean, we obviously don't have the, the commercial developments left to do, but the, the residential sites. We have a lot of, a lot of runoff and maintaining our ponding areas and keeping those clean and capacity will all play into these factors, but also upsizing, you know, storm sewer systems where we can, but also monitoring that, that we're not causing then a problem farther downstream. You know, the, the site at the old City Hall site, there, there's a commercial site that has in the past had a lot of runoff and flooding issues. And with the construction of that, watershed requirements, there'll be underground tank and storage sites there to maintain their runoff and stormwater from the roofs and parking lots on-site as much as possible. So they'll, just that site, even though it's causing, having much more impervious surface, is actually going to be improved dramatically.
And again, by approving this, this doesn't mean that it's a given that he's going to have this property mitigated from us.
No, I mean, the, I guess, you know, at this point, the, the, like, the chain of action with, with the storm events, this flooding could, could reoccur, will likely reoccur until at some time long into the future that we're able to do system improvements to prevent this from happening.
And again, this flooding's been going on for a long time.
Mm-hmm. Yep. But it, and I can tell you that the, working with the DNR has been very good, very easy to work with and the submittal with this, and then sending back their, the final request to, to process this through. And, and that's the split, 120,000 is the maximum matching fund with the, from the DNR.
All right. So again, if we approve this, it doesn't mean that...
We're not, we're not locked into, we're not locked into it. Then it just, it solidifies the grant and locks that grant in for us, and then starts the negotiation process with the property owner. And then ultimately, once that deal is put together, whatever that may or may not be, it comes back to the council and you decide if you want to move, move ahead with it.
What kind of reporting is asked for the grant? And does staff have capacity for that at this point?
Yes, I mean, well, basically, the, the reporting is, once this is completed, I mean, and the, and the site is cleared and it's open space, that's really the end of the process with the DNR. And just to maintain, the other thing is that the property is maintained into open space in perpetuity. We couldn't use this to acquire the property and then turn it into some, something else in the future or sell the property.
The motion is for a resolution, or any other questions? Not motions for a resolution for flood hazard mitigation grant, funding assistance to the City of North St. Paul. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson. Your second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Peterson. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose.
Nay.
Motion carries. Councilman, or Councilman?
Thank you.
Manager Dudak.
We'll get that, that information submitted and, and keep you abreast of our next, next steps on, on that process then. Next item that we have is the request from the American Legion for a special event car show, permit for your, for your consideration. This is something that the American Legion has been doing a car show internally on their site and looking to get back, back to that. And so this is up for your consideration. It's been, been something that's been held in conjunction, kind of along with our normal car show. All parties work together on this, so it's been received very well.
Any questions for City Manager? I don't have a resolution here, so a motion is for American Legion Special Event Car Show.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, motion carries. City Man?
Mayor Council, our next event is with Church of St. Peter, Special Event Permit. They have applied for a Special Event Permit. And this is something new that we, they haven't done in the past, but they're, they're looking to do a procession about the city, I mean, making three stops to have prayer and it would be at Polar Park, St. Mary Cemetery, and Silver Lake Park. And just looking to stop at those locations for, you know, probably 15, 20 minutes. This is a new initiative by, by St. Peters and just trying to get involvement. And they're really uncertain on how many people they would have at this point, but it's, it's something new that they would like to try and, as a, as a community, community outreach.
Interesting. So the motion is for approval of a Special Event Permit for the Church of St. Peter for an event on June 5th this year. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson. Your second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Peterson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. City Manager Dudak?
I believe that's the last item, but bringing back the item that was pulled from the original agenda.
So we have item J. And that is the general claims of $539,000 and 19 cents, or $19.84. Councilmember Thorson?
Yeah, I'm on page 37 of the packet. And this is the WSB and Associates bills. There's several of them listed, and they're all saying March 2021. Just getting some clarification on this, that, you know, it's June now. And if these bills are, even if it was dated March 31st, 61 days. I mean, are we, am I interpreting that correctly? Or is this just the description is saying this is work that was done in March and we got the bill? Because I don't see that detail here.
Maybe Kyle can answer that.
Councilmember Thorson, so yes, those are for services performed in March, but typically, we do not receive the March invoices till a little later in April. And then for statutes, for meeting council's ME twice, twice a month, it's 35 days from receiving it. And I can get back to you on the exact date that we receive these, but we stamp all invoices.
So these, these, these invoices we're going to approve here are potentially outside of that 35-day? Are they inside that?
I would, do you mind if I just look them up quick?
Sure. And while he's doing that, just another follow-up question of the City Manager on those last two items that we approved?
Yes.
Is there a reason why those things, like those types of items aren't on a consent agenda? Or are they, do they need to be a city action items just because of the nature of their request?
They, they don't need, we, we could have put them on the consent agenda. I think the item was just to make sure that council is fully aware of it, what's going on. And I think we were trying to do that more so than putting things out, just on the consent agenda. And so if there's any, one, the awareness of what's going on and if there's any, any comment or anything on them, but that was really the only reason.
Well, I mean, I'm just, you know, given light of the findings of the audit, I just want to make sure that, you know, when I see that, when I'm reading the bills, it says March. And again, I don't, we don't actually have the bill. And I, I wasn't sure if it was just saying, you know, this is the description of the bill, but we got it on May 1st, you know? And now it's in the packet to be approved. But, you know, outside of that, it says March, you know, it's June 1st. The month of April is 30 days and May is 31 days, you know? It's just kind of, I'm just asking about that.
Yep.
Again, we have an obligation to pay the bills, so I'm not objecting to getting them paid. I'm just questioning whether or not it's falling outside of our requirement to pay them within 35 days.
So Councilmember Thorson, the first invoice listed for McKnight Access, March 2021, we have a stamp date of May 20th.
Okay, so we're good. So, okay.
And, go ahead.
No, I, that, I mean, if, I'm assuming that's the case for the rest of these. I just wanted a clarification on that, that's all, so.
So the most...
Go ahead.
Motion is for the general claims of 539,000, $19.84. Your motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. City Manager Dudak, I believe you're up for the...
Yes, so reports, that is the last action.
Reports of City Manager.
Reports, and that's a good segue into, you know, talking about those, the WSB bills and, and the timing. One thing I want to report back, we're making great strides in working on the escrow accounts. Lisa Ritchie has been working on that, putting together. That's something that we've talked about in the past, about having our escrow accounts and being able to reconcile those and also be able to bill back if necessary. A lot of these projects that we've had, you know, over the many, many different years, about being really, really able to track that. You know, the, on an application, applicant might put down a $1,500 escrow account, but then as that process goes on, or in some cases, lingers on for, for a long time, to really be able to track and, and follow those associated costs, whether they be engineering costs, owning, planning, legal, that we're able to invoice those fees back. So what we would be doing is holding that initial escrow dollar amount in, in, in escrow. And as those funds come back in, or these bills come in, we would invoice that out and then use that, that escrow amount as, as a deposit, refund that deposit at the end if necessary, or, or use it depending on. But I can just tell you, so far, we've made great strides in putting together that. And I think it's going to, well, not think, it will be a, a, a big, a big change in what the process has been for the past many, many years to track that and, and recoup our cost that we've invested in a lot of these projects.
And I'm assuming the parks, too, the park rentals, will be able to take a fee now? Or, you know, for a damaged deposit?
Correct.
Be able to track that much better than...
Correct.
Before.
Yep, and that's something that they're working on. And I know that Kerry's been looking into that and getting back to the deposit and something. I want to, you know, we want to meet with council and talk about that and really get a, a program back together, deposits and all the other operational, and we'll have some information for you to consider. But just as the things that you heard tonight, we've got to get a handle on that and get it a handle on it quickly. And, you know, getting, getting a call this past weekend, call at, you know, 1:00 in the morning, what do, what do we do when we've got a building full of items that were left over? And we know we've got a, a tenant coming in the next morning, potentially at 7:00. And it's just become very problematic, not only the items that are left behind, but the magnitude of the cleanup. Inside of the building is one thing, the exterior is another. And then you heard this evening about potential, the, the potential noises and things, noise ordinances and that. So we've got many things that we need to, to look at. And, and we're seemingly having people utilizing our buildings from, from out, well outside of the city. You know, not only our, our North St. Paul residents, but residents from well outside of the city that are using the buildings. And we, we welcome all, we just, we just want, want to make sure that they're treating our, our facilities with respect.
Right. Good.
Let's see, the other thing, so the, the sidewalk work, as I mentioned, that continues in the downtown with, with that. And I've been really trying to keep up with notifying the businesses so we can work with them with access as things progress with that. Kerry's been out, we've also made some temporary signs for some of the businesses to make sure that they can keep their, their clientele coming and directing them to a side door, back door, and trying to mitigate those times as much as possible. I mentioned earlier in our workshop this, this evening, and I just want to bring that up again, that QuickTrip has, had their pre-construction meeting here last week, and, and that process is now underway. It's going to be a whirlwind of construction. They're, they're quick to move along. We're going to be, start to work on, I believe, Water Main tomorrow and progressing on, on getting the building up. Today was the first day that QuickTrip was also in our building here at City Hall with their job fair. They'll be in, in the building here conducting that. And, you know, just a, a relatively large employer. When you think about a, a convenience store, a gas station, convenience store, small grocery, if you will, what QuickTrip offers, but, and talking to them today, they're looking and hiring upwards of 55 employees for that, just for that location. So it's, it's not a, not a small employer. And so very much welcoming them to the community. And they're very, they're very community oriented and working with them. They're, they're excited to be here and I think will be a, a good long-term addition to our community. The construction at the apartments on the anchor side down there, you can see the work going on there. And there now, they're moving along very well. They literally have a, seemingly like their own lumberyard there. They've got lumber piled up all over down there, but the crews are working. You see the framing going up and, and that's, that's now starting to, to come out of the ground, if you will, moving along well. Downtown, the apartment building down there, last conversation we had with that, they've got over 40 leads lined up for the building. Now, whether they'll all convert to, to tenants will be the other thing, but they have over 40 solid inquiries at this point that they'll be working with. So the, the information there is, is moving along quite well. Businesses are excited to get the sidewalk put in place and get back to some of the normalcy as we were seeing with the whole COVID return and, and opening up things. That's been extremely positive. The, the activity that was around the, around the state, I think you've seen this weekend, has really showed people a desire to want to, to want to get out and get back to, back to outdoor activities and things. So a lot going with that. As I mentioned earlier, we're, we're progressing very well with the hiring process for replacement of our police chief. Civil Service Commission had been doing interviews ongoing with that. So we've got that process narrowing down very soon. And we'll have something moving forward with that quickly. Also, with our, our Finance Director's position that's opening, also working on that and hoping to have something, something done on that fairly quickly also. That, that application process closed, closed last week. So we are actively working on that to, to fill, to fill that and staying active with a lot of things going on. I didn't think what else I had.
I'll see Seventh Street Project going.
Seventh Street Project, the Seventh Street Townhomes is, is underway. The, the first foundation of the first twin home is, is in place. They were backfilling. I can tell you, we did have an issue with that last week of, of a complaint of, of working, working after hours. They were finishing up work, my understanding, up there on the backfill. And at precisely 7:00, we received a complaint of, of work going on there at, at, their hours are basically up till 7:00 PM. So that was, that was addressed and, and talked to the developer about. But otherwise, they're progressing along, they're very well up there. All the water, water and sewer is in for the, for the new road. And their construction is underway on the first new twin home located on the, would be the north, north side of the new road that's going in. So activities all around and keeping up with them. Yes, yes. So I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Any other questions on anything? Andy?
City Cleanup?
Oh, yes, yeah, yes. The city cleanup items, you can see some of the items that we have on there to date. So it's, so far to date, the expenses of $8,100... So it's, so far to date, the expenses of eighty-one hundred and thirty-five dollars, thirty-three cents. So there's, are shredding some of our directional signage that will be saved for future events. Our hauling and disposal cost for, for tennis, which was, I believe it was fourteen dumpsters, fourteen dumpsters of material that was hauled away from that. Our electronic recycling, those are still pending because they go through, virtually go through everything that was collected. Some of the items are chargeable, some of them are not chargeable, depending on what they are, because they can recover the precious metals and things from that. Appliance recycling was twelve-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars worth of appliance recycling, and you can see the items that were collected there. You know, the air conditioners and dehumidifiers, dishwashers, dryers, freezers, and the, the list goes on. Other items, seventy tires with no rims, forty-one tires with rims on them. Public Works staff was separating that for recycling. The four, no, a hundred and fifty mattresses, a hundred and fifty mattresses collected. You know, again, the fourteen dumpsters of, of material, fourteen thousand five hundred pounds of electronics. You know, that was something that we talked about in the future. Electronics is a big issue, and something that was lesser this time than what we've had in the past was appliances. In the past, appliances was a big thing, and electronics was not as big as what this is. Now it's flip-flopped, where there was lesser appliances. We were initially set up, we had a semi-trailer there on the site that day in anticipation for appliances, and we didn't put a dent in, in filling that, but the, the electronics, fourteen thousand, over fourteen thousand pounds of electronics, fifty lawnmowers that were, were brought in for disposal. So we, we tried to assemble so far to date on what the savings were to our residents versus if they had to dispose of these items through the bulk collection. So over thirteen thousand dollars in potential savings to our residents in lieu of if these items were disposed and paid for through the bulk collection program. So quite, quite successful. You can see also attached a letter there that we received from one of our residents, very thankful for the, for the event and the cleanup. Thought it was very, very well organized and just had a lot, a lot of praise for it, and thank you to all the staff and the departments working. So just wanted to attach that letter because it was a, it was a nice letter, she was very pleased with the, with the event, and we've, we've heard that from others also. So once we get the final totals in, we'll continue to update this list and, and give a complete, complete final report as we're waiting for the electronics to come back in. So the shredded event, I think that's something that we have to look at in the future to, to maybe do that separately. As we, we had it set up, you know, as obviously part of this event, but there was not, not anywhere near the shredding that we had anticipated to be used. And talking with the shredding company, they've, they've seen that in, in multiple different locations. In some cases, it was, you know, just steady stream of use, in other cases, it was something similar to what we experienced. So unknown, you know, if, if it has anything to do with COVID, people were dealing with it on their own while they've been home all these times, or, or what the reason was, or if it was just part of the cleanup and people were concentrating more on the bulk disposal. Also, the other thing with the electronics, you know, talking about the number of electronics we came in this year, if there would be a way that we could have different lines of, of disposal so people didn't have to wait in line, and if they just had electronics, they could go right, right to that process. But overall, it was quite successful.
Can I ask you a question about the, so that's, that event is included in our contract with tennis, correct? The, the one cleanup day? Is it included in our contract?
It's in, it's in there, not at a, not at a cost neutral.
Yeah.
That they would participate, yes.
And is it, is it my understanding that they provide this same service to other cities that they contract with?
Yes.
And, 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 because what I've been hearing is we've done it very differently than how they traditionally do it. It seems like we have quite a bit of involvement where they, you know, other cities, they don't, the, the extent of the city's involvement is just telling them the event will be held at this parking lot, and tennis does everything.
That, that is, that is an option to do, I mean, it basically comes down to cost and, and what they would do with it, but that is absolutely an option that they can coordinate, coordinate their services, you know, they would look at other, you know, other vendors for the electronics to do, because they don't do the electronics recycling or anything like that. But yeah, there's a whole multitude of ways that, that this could be done.
Okay.
It was a good event.
Yeah, very, very, went very well, yes. The last item I have is, again, with our civic clerk implementation. And Carrie, I don't know if you want to go through that again, as you discussed with the, if there's any other comments that you have, or maybe for our viewing audience to, to let, let our residents know where we're at and, and the, the different format that people are seeing out there. And if council, if you have any other, any other comment on that, but it's a, it's a process that's proving very, very much, I think, will gain a lot of efficiencies from.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I didn't see anybody running out of the council chambers, so I figured you figured out how to work through your packet with your tabs, okay, and we'll get you some help for your iPads. But just so our residents truly understand the commitment that staff has in pulling resources together for our council to give you the information that you need to make the decisions you need to do, and also to make that information available to our residents. We've been working on this tool here, we're getting much closer, we're ready to go to the next phase of letting our elected officials have access to our portal. We'll be working out, reaching out to the residents who have subscribed to our notify me modules on our existing website to get them transitioned. And I have a personal goal of at least doubling every single number of the people who are logged in, because I know a lot of people logged in those meetings are staff, because we're just making sure everything gets out. So we will continue to work along. I encourage you, please, to reach out to me, to staff with any kind of questions you have, ideas you have. And again, too, I'm, I'm really, the tech geek in me loves the whole hashtag thing and being able to tag different elements in our packets so that we can search them as we develop. You're just listening tonight on the conversations on the Planning Commission, some of these projects where we could tag those, so they're easier for you to search and find the information you need.
Just take something I'm getting used to. I have noticed that, but it's good.
We'll work with you later.
I know, it's-
It's easier than what we-
It's new, something new that-
And now council can have a taste for what staff has been going through for the last year. But no, we are, as a team, we are absolutely committed to making this work for the city, work for our residents, and the ease we've already experienced with having our city planners log in, our legal log in, and help us get all this information together, in my opinion, we've already paid for the subscription fee on the time savings that we've had.
Really? Wow, good.
We don't come cheap.
Very good. Any questions for Carrie? Doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Mayor, if I could just add to that, one of the commissions that, you know, it's been used very sporadically in the, in the past, and that's our Civil Service Commission. And really, it's been used for, for, literally for, for just hiring. And the goal is, or would we, we would implement it as part of this new procedure, these new, new commissions. And at this point, you know, and then seek council input on this, but at this point, we've been talking about having regular quarterly meetings with the Police Civil Service Commission, obviously moving forward with, with, with a, with a new chief coming on, and to really take that involvement to a new level, have the opportunity for, for public input at those meetings, and really open that up to a commission and hearing, hearing from the public and, and trying to utilize that for much more than just a, a hiring group. I think the, the commission is very interested and willing to, to do that and wanting to do it, just hasn't happened in, in the past. But this will be another opportunity to, to really publicize that, make it public, have, have set agendas, minutes, the recording, and make that available for the, for the public to, to be part of. One quick follow-up with that, I guess, and not necessarily looking for a, an answer this evening, but maybe also our city attorney can comment on it. And that's moving forward as things are, are opening up now, and our, our meetings, to restore our meetings back, back in, in-house, you know, Planning Commission meetings, all of those, and the continued use of, of Zoom. And do we, once we fully restore everything back to our in-person meetings, we reset the council chambers here in its normal fashion and get, get back to that, is, is Zoom a platform, or whatever other, the, whatever other, you know, media device for doing that, is that something that the council wants to continue as another media for the public to be able to interact with and be part of our normal, our normal functioning meetings? And so looking for your input on that.
My view is that it's here to stay. At Zoom, you know, through COVID and all that, it's, it's here to stay, it's a way for residents to be able to kind of view the, view the, view the meetings, and I do like the input. If somebody feels uncomfortable coming down here to talk in front of the group, they can jump on Zoom and, and look at it, or make their comments on, on that.
And I think that's the feedback that we've been hearing, that it's a, it's another, it's another mode, another media to, to make it available, whether it's, whether it's just a recording, you know, it's another way of, of recording that's out there on their website along with their YouTube and all that, but, but it is. It's available for residents to attend a meeting that they maybe otherwise wouldn't or couldn't. And I don't know if our city attorney has any-
I want to add, maybe city attorney, you know, when we're under the emergency orders, we're able to have Zoom meetings as a council outside of the chambers. Not having that, are we able to have Zoom meetings? I don't think we're, we're going to, but I think there's some commissions that it was almost kind of nice to have the Zoom meetings, so.
You will be able to continue, the legislature passed a new law in recognition of, you know, the city's use of Zoom meetings. There used to be a requirement about if you're going to appear remotely, where you're at still needs to be open to the public, things of that nature. I forget the exact change, but effective July first, cities can continue to remeet, meet remotely, but there are some additional limitations in terms of how many times someone can appear remotely. So I think there's the presumption that the five of you should be in chambers, but I'm not aware of any changes that say you can't open it up further to allow remote participation from your citizens. That, that has been the discussion of, it's a, it's a way to, you know, not everyone has the means to come into City Hall and appear before you. This is an addition, some view it as an additional way to get community engagement, involvement, so that they don't have to, you know, sit here for three hours, they may have childcare issues, they may have transportation issues, so on and so forth. So in terms of citizen participation, I'm not aware of any limitations on that.
Also, how do you feel? Councilmember Peterson?
I think it's good. I, I like that idea that it's transparent and people can, you know, choose that tool. And I got, like you said, Mayor, I think it's here to stay, and it's efficient, and yeah, I'm, I'm for it.
Councilmember Thorson?
Well, yeah, I mean, obviously if we can increase our access to the public, we should certainly do it, but, you know, I, we've obviously had our growing pains and learning issues with it. It seemed at some point, you know, when we were back here and integrating Zoom with these live meetings, there seems to be some technical difficulties and glitches and audio issues that maybe not necessarily related to Zoom, but, you know, if we can work on getting that all done, I don't see why, why we wouldn't.
Councilmember Y?
Yeah, I think that it does increase that transparency and access and takes into consideration any barriers that both, I think, probably commissioners and community may have. And I would say even from my experience in our last Planning Commission, we had a new resident, you know, participate, and he was like, I'm just here to listen. So I think that, to me, that there has been some use and could be more.
Councilmember Cole?
We're good.
Perfect.
Very good. Councilmembers would need to be here, is there the flexibility that, you know, if there's a council member not here that can, can remotely, and if that's the case, do we have to do any specific posting on, is that something that having to be in a public setting?
Now, we're dealing with Councilmember Peterson when she goes on her-
No, I, I, I do, I, I, we've, you know, pre-pandemic, Candy, I think we did-
I was in a public-
Yeah, but we have done it, we have noticed it. They are putting limitations on how many times you can take advantage of that. But no, you can still do it after July first for the five of you. I think it's, yeah, once a year, you're fine. So I don't, I don't see a problem with that. You, you, we could do it pre-pandemic, we'll be able to do it afterwards, there'll be restrictions, you know, we did it more than three times during the pandemic, but that, to me, is self-explanatory in terms of one.
But you think you might have to be in a public setting, or you can't-
Yes.
-be on the beach?
Well, you just, well, beach might be public, I mean, it's pretty accessible. No, we can review the, the, the regulations in terms of how you do a remote meeting after July one, for sure. But there was a recognition that during the pandemic, people were meeting from their home, which weren't open to the public. Well, we, we didn't want people going out into the public, so this notion of, fine, you can appear remotely, but you need to be in a place that's open to the public, was a bit contradictory to what the executive orders were trying to accomplish. So going forward, it, it, you know, if we don't have to worry as much about the pandemic, I think there's an expectation that elected officials primarily use council chambers. On, on the rare occasion you don't, that you're in a place where the public could access it, so.
So again, it goes back to the commissions, I think there's something that is said for being Zoom on a commission that-
They're subject to the open meeting law the same way you are, so the same rules would apply to them in terms of number of times and so on and so forth.
Okay, good. All right, city manager, anything?
That's the last item, I believe, unless anybody has any other questions.
Any questions for city manager?
I have a question about the timeline for the police chief, and then also if, how many candidates we received for the Finance Director since it closed last week, correct?
Closed on Friday, I believe, if I remember right, we had six applications for Finance Director, and we had twenty for Police Chief, and that was narrowed down and interviewed nine.
And then you have a tentative hiring date for either?
Really hoping that the Police Chief position would be something that we would be able to finalize a conditional offer yet this week. And the Finance Director is something that we have to, with that just closed, looking at those today, and then do, do interviews on, on a couple candidates there.
Thank you.
Okay, so we got reports of council and commissions and committees, Councilmember Cole?
Short tweet, the Silver Lake Improvement Association meeting will be, next one is June the seventh. It is, the information is available on their Facebook page, and I don't remember if we agreed that we were going to post that information. It is posted, thank you. That's it.
Councilmember Y?
As you can tell, the Planning Commission has been very busy, and we do have our next meeting here coming Thursday at six-thirty via Zoom.
Councilmember Peterson?
The League of Minnesota Cities will have their virtual annual, annual conference on June twenty-third, twenty-fifth. I encourage you all, because it's ninety-nine dollars, if five of us sign up, keynote speakers, PJ Fleck from the Gophers, and Justice Alan Page. And there's a lot of other things going on. A Minnesota Woman in City Government, which shows our awards for our appointees and elected officials, and that will be also involved with the annual conference. That's all I have.
Councilmember Thorson? General Business, Councilmember Cole?
I just, I just want to share that I had the opportunity to attend the pinning and oath session of our, of all of our new police officers. It was, several of us were there, it was a phenomenal opportunity, the gymnasium at North- It was a phenomenal opportunity. The gymnasium at North was, I define it as packed. Having been in there for other sporting events, there were more people in attendance there than I've, I've seen some of, at some of the high school sporting events. So it was, it was phenomenal. It was great to give them their recognition. It was great to see family members there, you know, and cheer on our, our next group. I can't remember the number that we had sworn in, but it was, it was a sizable group.
And these have been holding on for, for some time. You know, some of them started pre, pre-COVID, and then COVID hit, and it's really been holding it on. And it came together because they really wanted to make sure that that swearing in took place under our current chief that they was hired under. And then there was a lot of logistics on training, officers in training, and when it could happen, and the size of things, and, and just also the, the overall concern sometimes of events like this. So, but Amber, Amber Kay, who is our school resource officer, really did a phenomenal job putting, putting this together and, and working with the school and having it there, and, and it worked out very well. Officers were very appreciative of it.
That was a really good event.
It was a great event. The only other thing I have to, to bring up is, is we start to establish what the new normal looks like, and it's exciting to see, to see people smile, where you just have to look for it in the eyes. It's, it's nice to see the pearly whites. And I'm excited to talk about Fall Roundup, and what Fall Roundup is going to look like. Are we going to go back to doing additional activities outside of the parade, like the, like we used to? So I look forward to having those conversations around their future as well.
General Business, Councilmember Wong?
You know, I, if I may go back to commission updates.
Yes, you may.
There, there has been some proposals from TA Schiffsky's on outdoor storage. It's, it's different from an expansion of the business, but it's considered outdoor storage, and they are proposing that, which would require some fencing, as our code allows. So they are providing different options for fencing. It could be a mixture of landscaping and a six-foot fence, or has also been proposed as a 16-foot concrete wall. Again, that runs along the gateway trail, so there is some discussion, and just working with Schiffsky's on providing a little bit more details to, to exactly what they're, they're proposing. So that is, I think, on our next agenda. And if, of interest, it is a lot to take in, honestly, it really is. So if, if that's helpful for you all to, to, you know, check in on that meeting, or if you would like more updates from me, I can do that.
And along that line, one of the issues that they're looking at, you know, adding at this point is replacing their, their current silo. They have one silo for their asphalt mix as they produce it, and they're, they're looking to replace that to add three silos on, on the site there. And so, as Councilmember Wong mentioned, there's, I think this is potentially the first, kind of the first phase of their intended improvements on the site. You know, not only these silos, but landscape and potential buildings and relocation of things, and, and realignment of the, of the driveway coming out of, out on the Third Street, that would, right now, it's, it's kind of offset to, to what the new anchor drive lines up. So a lot of those issues for discussion and seeing how that can work out. But yeah, I would encourage the same thing.
And one more thing to add to that is that those silos have been, there has been discussion about whether the Arts and Culture Commission would be able to have some, that there may be some artwork, and that Schiffsky's, at the time, seemed open, but they are open to that discussion.
General Business, Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, just the, adding on with the swearing in, it was very awesome to see that North St. Paul will be well-served by these new candidates, and it was a great event. Silver Lake Beach is getting busier, it's going to get more busier, and I know we're not going to do lifeguards, but I just hope we have a safe summer out there, because I see a lot of stuff going on. It's all good, you know. But I get worried about the inner tubes, and the dogs, and the fishing, and so hopefully, everyone will be careful out there. And I want to wish all the fathers out there a happy Father's Day. Thank you.
Councilmember Thorson?
Yeah, just a couple items. Earlier, we had discussion about liquor licenses and how, you know, we've gotten feedback from both the applicants and staff, and how utilizing this software, excuse me, that we've, we've implemented. I think it might make sense to review the fee that we charge. I know in the past, that's been questioned, and that the explanation was, well, there's, you know, a certain amount of staff time involved with applications and whatnot. And if that's been reduced significantly, I think we should revisit that, and what we're charging for that. If there's less time involved staff-wise, probably makes sense to look at that. I understand there's costs involved with the initial purchase of the software and maintaining that, but from my understanding, that's been paid for in full by the CARES Act that we received. And also, you know, this idea about having outdoor areas sectioned off during, like, city events, like the Fall Roundup, or, or the car show, and allowing alcohol to be consumed outside of these areas that, you know, like the bars and restaurants that do serve that. We've extended them to allow consumption on the right-of-way in the sidewalk area, and in particular, in an event like the car show, where it's, the road's blocked off, we have police presence, and then there's also staff, volunteer staff. I just think it's something that, you know, in the past, it's been, you know, various reasons we were told why you can't do it, but it seems like that's something we can revisit and have discussion on. Last council meeting, we discussed the potential of adopting a city policy about recording all council meetings, workshops, commission meetings, basically any meeting. I'm glad to hear that the Police Civil Service Commission is going to get on that as well. But we didn't actually have a, a policy to review and vote on, and I understand that there's some council members that don't agree that some or all meetings need to be done that way. But I think, you know, obviously, if there's a majority here that think that's the case, we should actually have a, a policy that we review and, and consider and vote on. So I, you know, at some point in the future, I'd like to see that come back for us for consideration and a vote to make an official policy. And then last item, you know, we talked about the Seventh, Seventh Street Development, the townhome development. This is public information, correct, Soren, that lawsuit from, that stemmed from that?
It is.
Okay.
That's the judge's orders.
Yeah, the judge's orders that we were given back in, I believe it was March, but the, looked like this was signed off on February 23rd. And the plaintiff had, was it 60 days to appeal?
Yes, they, they've waived their right to that appeal.
Okay. So, you know, just following through, because I think this serves a public interest that they understand what had happened. You know, someone sued the city, they didn't, they didn't agree that the PUD was issued properly. From my understanding, the, the judge dismissed it with prejudice. Is that the correct terminology?
That's correct, the judge, the city's favor.
Yeah. So I would just like to take the copy of that and submit that for the record for the minutes as well. And also, if, follow up to see, do we have a dollar figure on what that cost the city to defend at this time?
I, I don't have that. The league appointed outside, or, well, the league appointed council for that, the person was internal at the trust, they didn't appoint another law firm. So my, my involvement on it was minimal. But, but the city was charged.
And we could follow up and get that cost to enter into that, as we've had, you know, some of these other suits where the league covers us, but we, we still receive a bill for it. So we can get you the exact dollar amount, if we've received it at this point.
Okay. Well, I mean, not trying to, you know, if people have qualms about the city, and they feel it's not addressed, that's certainly their right to take that action. But I also think it's appropriate to follow up and make it known publicly that, you know, in this case, it was essentially a frivolous lawsuit, and that, that cost the taxpayers, you know, a significant amount of money. And I think it's just appropriate to, that we state that for the record, so everyone understands.
We'll look that up and see if I can add that to this record at this time, so it's all tied together.
That's all I have.
I got a couple of condolences. BJ Hack passed away, a long member of the community for many years, St. Pete's, and moved out to Woodbury. Her, and, trying to think of her husband's name, he passed away a couple years, Louis, 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 passed away a couple years ago. But send our condolences out to the family. And then Roger Ball, I just noticed, passed away. I think he was a resident of Maplewood, but a very, or Oakdale. What's that? Yep, yep. Worked at the Legion for a long time, and he worked on the Veterans Park in, in Oakdale. That's how I got to know Roger. Memorial Day event that happened down at the Veterans Park went over well. It was kind of funny, it was advertised, everything was going to happen at 12:30, but the, the honor guard, you know, the taps, they got done early at the other cemeteries, and they made it down there around 12, 12:05. And, you know, you got a lot of people, it's warm out in, in the sun, and they're all in uniform, and so they did it right away. And a few people missed, they showed up around 12:30 and missed, missed the event, and had one person that was not very happy with it. But, you know, these are volunteers, and first year that they've done it down there. So, and they plan on doing it again next year, and make it an annual, annual event. That's all I have. So anything else? Not, we're going to go into closed session. A motion to go into closed session, as permitted by Section 13D, that 05, subdivision 3A, to evaluate the performance of the city manager. Do I have a motion? Moved by Councilmember Thorson. Second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries, we'll go into closed session.